Good evening, the meeting will come to order if you will all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I may ask you all to please remain standing for a moment of silence. Last week, we lost a former member of the Saguas School Committee, Mrs. Elena Spindel. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening to the members, Mr. Chair, Manager, Mrs. Reed, and all the guests here this evening. First, on tonight's agenda, we do not have any invited guests, correct Wendy? Thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes, first one being November 26th at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of November 26th, subject to any changes or modifications by the board.
Selectman Castaneda moves to accept the minutes, to approve the minutes of November 26th. Seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Panetta.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 10th, 2013, barring any changes or corrections from the board.
Mrs. Selectman Panetta moves to accept the minutes of December 10th at 7:30, seconded by the chair.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
If I could amend, please, these minutes, page 7, Wendy. Third paragraph down regarding the non-renewal of the Personal Chef Company. The same motion, but we did add upon the recommendation of the town manager the additional reason of failure to file an application for renewal. And I believe the motion was five to zero. Thank you.
Any further changes, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Panetta's motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Mrs. Saboni's request for a banner announcing Scott Procopio Road Race.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Panetta.
I would, I see that Ms. Saboni has asked for the request for the banner in the past, and it's around the same timeframe. And so I would like to make a motion to allow Ms. Saboni, her request for the banner announcing the Scott Procopio's Road Race, and for it to be on the Main Street site from May 5th, 2014, to May 26th, 2013.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Sorry.
Seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is a request for a banner announcing spring registration. Saguas Youth Soccer would like to put up their banner for spring registration, and is requesting this be put up on Main Street or Essex Street from February 20th to March 20th. It's the same banner as in the past with no changes. And this is submitted by Kelly Nicolay.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve.
Main Street or Essex Street?
Main Street or Essex Street.
Whatever's available, I don't care, it doesn't make any difference. Are they both available, Wendy?
Yep.
Essex Street?
That's fine.
Yeah, they had Essex Street last year, too.
Okay.
Selectman Castaneda moves that we approve the request of Saguas Youth Soccer to put their banner up on Essex Street from February 20th to March 20th, seconded by the chair. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. If we could have a motion to take the show cause hearings out of order?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Panetta moves to take the show cause hearings out of order, seconded by the chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Do we have any motions on the show cause hearings?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
I would make a motion to continue the hearing on Chapman Auto Body.
Mrs. Panetta moves that, excuse me, Selectman Dever moves that we continue the hearing on Chapman's Auto Body. Seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
I would like to make a motion to grant, to take no action on Burger King and Victor's due to payment of monies that were in arrears.
Selectman Dever moves that we take no action on Burger King or Victor's due to the fact that they are up to date on their payments, seconded by the chair. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
I would make a motion to deny Qdoba based on non-payment of outstanding taxes.
You, Selectman Dever, moves to deny Qdoba based on non-payment of outstanding payments. Seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving along on the agenda, we have the 2014 license renewals.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Castaneda.
On December 10th, we met and voted to renew any application that's been received and complete by December 31st at this meeting. So I'd like to make a motion to renew the following establishment submitted complete applications by December 31st. Victor's, 1539 Broadway, common victualers and entertainment. Yo Passion, 1201 Broadway, for common victualers and entertainment. CVS at 1075 Broadway, for extended hours of operation permit. Panera Bread, 647 Broadway, common victualers. GameStop, 1201 Broadway, valuable used goods. GameStop, 741 Broadway, valuable used goods. Best Buy, 1201 Broadway, valuable used goods. Taco Bell, 421 Broadway, common victualers. Fat Fingers, 343 Main Street, common victualers, entertainment and jukebox. And Center Convenience, 307 Central Street, extended hours of operation permit.
Seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Castaneda's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Castaneda.
I'd like to make a further motion to renew and issue the following licenses to be issued for 2014. Auto Excellence Group, 173 Main Street, Class II Auto Dealer's License, and Little Children's Schoolhouse, 31 Osprey Road, for common victualers and entertainment.
Seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much. I do see that we did miss number three on the correspondence, and that is correspondence from Mrs. Defarias. Mrs. Defarias had sent a request for a handicap parking in front of her home at 14 Summer Drive. This was referred to the police department, and I'm going to recognize Lieutenant Van Steinsberg. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, board members. We looked at this request, and we did a site survey, and based solely on the request from the parking, the request for the parking space, and the reason why I say that is because this request appears to be either the cause of, the result of some type of neighbor dispute that's going on on Summer Drive. Solely based on the request for the parking space, the police department recommends to deny the handicap space. And the street is a very tight street. We don't recommend that the board support any type of authorized parking on the street that we'd have to enforce. It would make traffic, it would cause greater traffic problems on that street. The other reason is that because the home of 14 Summer Drive does have a fairly large driveway that accommodates two vehicles, and I believe that that's the safest option for a person, especially if it's with concerns, handicap concerns, to get in another vehicle and to access the home. If you park out in front of the house, there's no walkway that connects the street. You'd have to walk over a patch of grass just to get to the paved sidewalk. So I believe that the safest route is the driveway anyways. And if you were to park out in front of the house, you'd have to walk towards the driveway to get to a paved area to access the home. So based solely on that, we denied, we're not recommended that. However, with that said, you know, the police department's going to support whatever the board decides.
Thank you very much. What are the wishes of the board?
I'm here to speak from the community.
This is, are the Defariases here? Okay, okay.
Madam Chairman.
We could table.
Madam Chairman, if I could, if I could ask you, because I had an opportunity to go down and look at the area, and as you say, it is an extremely narrow street. There is a large parking area at the home of the people who've asked for your assistance, but there's also, would appear to be adequate parking for the neighbor who appears to be causing the difficulty here. So what options would you suggest to this family who apparently is having a great deal of difficulty? And we know we can't dictate good neighbors, but what advice would you have for them? They both appear to have health issues and have concerns about their ability to adequately leave their property.
We've, I've actually personally monitored that street over the last week or two, both evening hours and on the overnight hours. The police department, we're kind of stuck in the fact of, we're limited with what we can enforce. Right now, on the books for the bylaws, the only ban, ban for parking that we enforce is the, is the snow removal when there's a snow emergency. And there is an overnight parking ban in Saguas between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., and that's year-round. Traditionally, however, we choose not to enforce that unless there's other types of issues. And the reason the police department kind of looks the other way with that is because we're very sympathetic to the fact that you have a lot of homes nowadays with multiple drivers, multiple vehicles, and we know that parking can be an issue. So unless there's a problem in a neighborhood or complaints, we tend not to enforce that. In this instance, because it's been brought to our attention and we monitor it, there have been citations that were issued for overnight parking at the, in front of 15 Summer Drive, which is, which was allegedly the people that are causing, causing the issues. So what I can say is that the police department will continue to monitor the situation. We're hoping that by this coming to light, that we could, you know, use this as an open forum to mediate everyone to say, hey, you know what, 15 Summer Drive, you have plenty of parking, too. You shouldn't be blocking the roadway. And I would say 14 Summer Drive, you know, it's responsible, you're doing the responsible thing as a neighbor and using your driveway to not block that road. Like you said, it's a narrow street and everyone needs to, you know, everyone's going to live there. Everyone has to work together. But we're definitely limited in what we can enforce. And the police department's stance is our worry is by authorizing an actual space out in the street, we're actually adding to the problem. So that's what I, that's what I concern was.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
I'd just like to thank you for your explanation and to understand that between 2:00 and 6:00, you do have an action you can take year-round if needed. What concerns me is the difficulty emergency vehicles may have getting to that home, given the health concerns if there are cars parked on either side. I know when I went down there for me to park, another car would have difficulty getting by me or a large vehicle, so.
Excuse me, excuse me, you can't talk out of order. I do see your hand is raised, but this is not a, excuse me ma'am, excuse me. We will recognize you at Citizens Comment, period. But right now, this is a discussion on a matter in the business meeting, so I hope you understand. We will recognize you, but at this particular time, this is the board discussing with the representative from the police department. Thank you.
So again, my concern was, was the safety, obviously, of these residents, and that you do have an option if needed. So I'm hoping that that will rectify the situation for the moment.
Right, and just working off of that, if, I would, I would encourage anyone on that street, if they believe that there is a, an unsafe situation, there's too many vehicles parked on the road, there's vehicles parked across from each other, that to the point where they don't believe an emergency vehicle could come down that street, call the police business line. A route car will be sent out to investigate. And if, if the road is being impeded where a fire truck and ambulance can't make it down the street, that's an enforceable, you know, violation for us, too. That's a case-by-case basis. The fact that this has been brought up to our attention, there's been correspondence back and forth. I've personally been monitoring it, and it's also been put out to the other cars, that the units are aware of it and are driving through that area. So if there are any violations that we see, we're certainly going to take action on it. So I would just encourage that anyone in that neighborhood, not just the two addresses that have been brought up, but anyone in that neighborhood, if they believe that there's a parking situation that's causing an unsafe manner, that, you know, a fire truck and ambulance can't come by, call the business line, we'll come down and investigate, and if, and if we do see a violation, we will enforce that. And again, just to reiterate, there are added patrols in that area to keep an eye on that parking issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Selectman Dever. What are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Allen.
In my opinion, I think I'd want a little bit more information. Is there a chance that we could actually continue this until the following meeting? Because I do want to hear what they have to say in Citizens Comment also.
Okay. I'm not going to take any action. We will, if we could, with the permission of the board then, so that these folks can be heard, we will move, take the Citizens Comment, period, out of order beyond the board's Selectman's draft. Is that what you're suggesting, you want to hear from the folks here?
That would work, thank you.
Okay.
Is there a motion to table?
That would be a motion to table. Seconded by the chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Do we have another motion to take Citizens Comment?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Panetta moves to take Citizens Comment, period, out of order. Seconded by the chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I did see a few of you back there that wanted to speak on this issue. If you'd like, you would come to the podium, give your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jeff Plouffe, I live at 15 Summer Drive. Apparently, I'm one of the reasons we're here. I was the individual who was ticketed and did speak with such neighbor as to ask them after seven years of living across the street from each other, why couldn't this have been solved with just a simple, do you mind not parking directly behind my driveway? Seeing that we've lived together for seven years without an incident. At that point, is when the people at 14 Summer Drive, the Defariases, tend to have a slight issue with the conversation, and it escalated, as sometimes things do. And they decide to call the police department, who showed up at the scene. And basically, we talked to them, they asked us not to park there. Since the situation, my truck's been in the driveway every night. The fact that there is a unsafe, as you may say, to pass the street, I find that very hard to believe. That's your opinion, and obviously, that's my opinion. As far as the handicap sign, I mean, that's completely up to you guys. I don't deem it necessary that somebody that has a six-car driveway needs to have a handicap spot in front of, which would then be considered pretty much behind my driveway. It's basically all I have to say, so it's, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to be heard on this issue? Seeing none? Motion to table.
Hi, my name's Ann Dominic, I live at 9th Summer Drive. I've grown up on that street all my life. Both my parents are handicapped, who have never had a problem parking. I always make room for fire trucks, ambulances. There's never an issue on our street with parking. I park on the street, my husband parks on the street. I actually backed into my neighbor's car twice that was parked on the street. I never complained, I mean, that stuff happens, you got to pay attention. They were even up on the thing, and I still parked into them, backed into them, many, many years ago, obviously. But there's not a parking spot, this is just some people that are being difficult. They're just difficult people, and they don't want to complain about everything. That's all I get to say.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to take this off the table?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Castaneda takes the issue off the table, seconded by the chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. What is the wishes of the board? Do we have a motion? Selectman Castaneda.
I'm going to make a motion to support the police department's recommendation in not installing handicap sign.
Selectman Castaneda makes a motion to deny the request based on the police department's recommendation for a handicap parking only sign in front of 14 Summer Drive. The motion is seconded by the chair, is there further discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
At this time, based on the recommendation of the police department, I will support Selectman Castaneda's motion with the assurances that the police department will keep this issue in the forefront, try and maintain safety in that area for all of the neighbors. And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Selectman Panetta.
I want to echo Selectman Dever's comments regarding the police department. Thank you very much for going down there. I know the street, Summer Street, very well, and I would hope that the neighbors could all work together so that this doesn't continue to be an issue. And if it does, I'm sure that it will come before the board again. So at this time, I'm going to also vote in favor of Selectman Castaneda's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Panetta.
After making the motion, I would like to make a comment.
Certainly.
You know, this isn't the first time that a neighborhood dispute has manifested itself in terms of parking. And I think that, for the most part, that doesn't solve the problem, it just exacerbates it. And hopefully, the neighbors at some point will recognize the fact that you have to live together and do the best you can to get along. By putting a parking space, a handicap parking space in front of someone's house, or putting up no parking signs on one side of the street, it really doesn't do anything to solve the root problem. So hopefully, by denying this request, people will start to look at a solution rather than continue the battle on Summer Drive.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Selectman Castaneda's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much, Lieutenant Van Steinsberg, for all your efforts. Thank you to the residents who came out on such a cold evening.
Good luck out there.
Good luck. Next on the agenda is the Board of Selectmen's FY15 draft department budget. Are there questions? Are there, I'm going to ask Mr. Manager, do you have any questions on this particular budget that was proposed?
I don't, I haven't had a chance to review it.
You have not had a chance to review it, okay.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
If I might.
Certainly.
Good evening, Mr. Manager. You were kind enough to provide to us the Town of Saguas guiding principles. And in looking at the documentation that was sent to each department head pertaining to the initial budget exercise, I noticed that we're asking all department heads to level fund their budget. And I certainly understand the historical past of the community. But what I had difficulty with is the guiding principles for the Town of Saguas state that the budget will be driven and support service priorities in the town. That is our guiding principle, that this budget will drive and support the service priorities of the town. So I think that's a real challenge to support and service priorities on a level-funded budget. And so I just acknowledge that challenge and, you know, realize how difficult it is. I think it's going to be very difficult to prioritize when we level fund. And I just acknowledge that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Dever. I will point out on the budget, and I did not realize you had not seen this yet, Mr. Manager, there is a change on the line that says the association. It was not the association dues that we were going to discuss. You and I had talked about the fees that are incurred when we attend conventions, and your plan, I believe, was to have a continuing education approach?
Yeah, professional development.
Professional development, okay.
Which is something that we've, you know, with all the departments that we've, in the last couple of budgets, have tried to increase, and it's something that is one of the priorities that we're looking at with all employees and departments. So I think we'd label it something to that effect, a professional development.
I guess my concern is, under association dues, we would have to apply, if we want to, as board, go to the seminars that are available to us, which I think would be extremely helpful through the Mass Municipal Association and the Massachusetts Selectman Association. Would it be wise for you to consider to put that in this budget? Or is this going to be a pool of money that would be accessed by, through all your employees? What was your plan?
Essentially, we would put it into the Selectmen's budget or the individual budget so that we can allocate and track it, so that we would, you know, and at some point, now that the budgets are coming in from different departments, we'll set up a time that you and I can speak.
Sure.
To go over that and sort of work out those details.
Okay.
And how to structure it, and, you know, we're sort of, through the last couple of years' process, you know, finding out that certain line items, you know, aren't particularly describing exactly what is being spent on, so we've been making adjustments, and it's, you know, a work in progress. But, you know, we'll spend some time to go over that and work that out.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the members of the board?
So, Madam Chair, do you want to table this until you have a dollar amount to put in there?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to table that if needed.
Selectman Panetta moves to table the draft budget for FY15, seconded by the chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Zero. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much. Next, we have continued hearings on Hometown Pizza. That is, I would ask for a motion to again continue that hearing.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Panetta moves that we continue the hearing on Hometown Pizza, seconded by the chair. It is continued to the call of the chair anyway. Is there further discussion? Seeing none? Excuse me, Selectman Castaneda.
What are we waiting for to make a decision on these grease traps?
That is, was going to come up under Old Business on some of the issues that we're waiting for. What we are waiting for, and I think we can just address this now because it does pertain to it, is, Mr. Manager, you were going to try to identify an individual that were not available through CDM, so that we could have the meeting separate just regarding this, because the last time it was a little bit chaotic. Where are we at with that?
It's been challenging. We have not been able to identify an individual or an engineer that specifically has an expertise in the small, these type of grease traps we have, which maybe an alternative is to bring somebody in, like CDM, or someone compatible to that, that work on, that understand fog and grease traps, but on, at a larger, larger scale. You know, they're dealing with treatment plants and whatnot, so that's, that's sort of been the challenge. I've asked CDM if they could recommend somebody. of been the challenge. I've asked CDM if they could recommend somebody. I've asked, we've asked another company, and nobody seems to be able to have anybody that specifically understands or knows these particular devices.
Okay. Because this issue's been going on for quite some time, and I believe that CDM did not have somebody that actually deals specifically with this. That's what you're saying now.
They...
But you've reached out to them?
Yeah.
To try to identify somebody? Is that what you're saying?
I've asked them for, if they could do that, and they aren't able to bring somebody or recommend somebody that specifically deals with grease traps at this level. But they do have, in further conversation, they have engineers that deal with the grease trap and fog at a larger scale, in the sense of, you know, a bigger thing. They do have general knowledge of these things that could be helpful.
Would they have knowledge on alternatives? This is, this was the purpose of holding off, because there was a real concern, correct me if I'm wrong, especially, Selectman Castaneda, you seem to be quite vocal on this, and I agree, that we did not want to burden the businesses with a very large expense if there was an option available to them. So they're kind of in flux. They're waiting to hear from us. We're waiting to hear on what exactly we can suggest or we can be educated on. What other avenues do you feel can be explored to try to be able to get some sort of handle on this?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Allen?
Through you to the Town Manager. The, and I may get the acumen wrong, but the Lynn Water Authority that we're supposed to get approval from once we come up with a solution, would that be an avenue that we could possibly approach? Maybe they'll have answers?
I would probably, I would, the answer I would give is, I think it would be difficult to have somebody from their ad organization wanting to come here and give advice on those type of issues.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever?
I have a suggestion that I hope would be helpful. Our health agent, obviously, has a number of peers in surrounding communities throughout the Commonwealth and is very well-educated and attends a number of seminars. And I'm hoping that, as the Board of Health has obviously made comment, that they too are interested in seeing that our bylaws advance along with the technology that has advanced since these bylaws were last enacted. I'm hoping that our health agent might be able to reach out to other health agents across the Commonwealth through his connections with these individuals and see what other communities are doing instead of reinventing the wheel, and getting bylaws that do work in other communities so that we can move this process forward. I think we've been very patient. I understand the holidays have been here, but this is an issue that really needs to have a resolution, both for the Board moving forward and future Boards, and for the business community who'd like to come into our community and operate a business. So that would be my suggestion.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Castaneda?
I think one of the issues that really stood out at that last discussion was the fact that our regulations do not require the installation of an external grease trap. Requires the installation of an external type grease trap. And Selectman Panetta, at one point during one of the discussions, mentioned that the cost is somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000, which is comparable to the alternatives that we're looking at. Nowhere does it say we have to have that put in the ground. And I think that, rather than prolong this indefinitely, I'm sure that the businesses that are affected by the need for an external grease trap would be more than willing to come up with the money to buy one of those external grease traps and install it in the basement or somewhere on the premises, without having to go through the expense of digging up their driveways, their lots, the street, and whatever else it takes to put them in. That's where the cost comes out. And that's what's happened to this situation. We're so concerned with the cost, but the cost is not for the product, it's for the labor to have it installed. And I think that if this goes on much longer, I'd be willing to make a motion to allow these people to put an exterior type grease trap in their premises rather than in the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Castaneda. The concern I have with, with what you're saying is, number one, do you think we can, Mr. Manager, can we get something settled within the next two to three weeks, that you can get a handle on? Mrs. Dever's suggestion was very, very good. I think that you can actually reach out to the DPH at the state level. But we also have that consent order that we have to be very aware of when we're making these decisions. And that was what kind of stalled us the last time, was that, I think people, that was brought up, that their hands are tied as far as the enforcement of our bylaws. That's what we need to look at. If the Health Department, as Mr. Giaccoloni said, if it says external, that's what they have to go along with. And then you have the consent order that we could be in violation of. All of those things, I believe that's what we were gonna have addressed at this meeting. And again, I think that a lot has been taking place at the time of year and whatnot. We can't wait much longer. So I think if you could aggressively have people reach out, as Mrs. Dever said, to other communities, reach out to the state level, reach out to anybody that you can think of that would have, perhaps, the networking abilities to get the identification done and get this booked. And I'd like to see this no later than February 1st. Does that make sense to you folks?
Absolutely.
So if you could make certain that you have the information, we have enough time to book a meeting and get everybody together no later than February 1st, so that we can get this resolved.
So just for clarification, what is it that you want, or who do you want at the meeting?
We've already discussed this in the past. What the people we wanted at the meeting were people that could educate the Board, and all of us, all of the people, the employees that you have. I know that the Board of Health has an interest in also the alternatives. But we need to look at the regulations, and we also need to make certain that everybody has the education on the alternatives that are out there. Your task was to identify somebody who would be able to provide that education to the Board and to the employees. And I know that you've been stymied by identification.
Yeah, we, the plumbing...
But go a little further. Go to some, maybe some of the higher education. See what they can recommend to you. Don't leave any stone unturned, because this is, this has taken, we've been here two months, and this is an issue that's been in front of us for two months.
I know that the plumbing inspector did reach out to the state Plumbing Inspector's office and spoke with them. And I think probably, you know, based on what you're, the Board's looking for, we'd probably be able to get somebody that wouldn't be necessarily an expert on that, but may be able to analyze it and give some sort of an educated, you know, scientific analysis of that system. I think that, if I'm not correct, my understanding is you're, the Board's looking to see if that, the alternative is as good or better than what we're putting in for external grease traps, correct?
Yes.
But it may not be an actual engineer. I mean, maybe the other idea is to have the people, you know, this is an idea, is that the company that puts the external grease traps, maybe they have knowledge of these new alternatives, as well as maybe, you know, I know that those gentlemen showed up on their own. Maybe having one of them, not with everybody, you know, so it's sort of chaos, but have one of those engineers sort of at least make his pitch, you know, of, not in the sense of pitch, but to explain what it is that it does, rather than a brochure, and how it actually works.
What we talked about here, first of all, and I want to make it perfectly clear too, I think we all agreed on this at the meeting, that, like you said, that chaos took place. This meeting will be in addition to our regular selectmen's meeting. This is not gonna take place at our regular business meeting. While the people that came here that evening, and some of us have received mail to our homes promoting their products, it's very important that whomever comes before us is not the person who is, for lack of a better term, selling the product. They need to show us the scientific data. If there's somebody in that company that has the engineering background, that, you know, advanced plumbing, that's who you want to identify.
Right, not a salesman, I mean an expert, that's an engineer.
If you can identify them and you can verify their credentials?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever?
In the documentation and in the research, you know, we had several issues, and I think the Manager was aware of them. Our sewer regulations date back to the 1980s. Technology has certainly advanced. We want to encourage the business community, and we want to achieve taking this out of our sewer system. But $30,000 to blast ledge on a 1987 bylaw, when technology has advanced, it certainly makes sense. The documentation we got alluded to other communities using this and approving of this. So I think it's a good recommendation to see what other communities are using this product. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I think we're making it unnecessarily cumbersome. And you're right, it has been far too long, and we need to resolve the issue. So I think that there's avenues out there to get the information.
So just to be clear, so you don't, you don't want the engineer, or you, in other words, you'd rather have the Board of Health?
I want as much information as possible on if that technology will achieve what it is we want to achieve. And if we need to rewrite a bylaw, there are other communities using this, and the people who provide these products would know what communities they are.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Allen?
I mean, basically, what we need to make sure that happens is that it meets the requirements. Because we are a little bit different than some of the other communities, where we have requirements that Lynn has to approve it.
That's correct.
So what we want to be able to do is have someone that could take a couple different options to us, saying, okay, this will meet the requirements that we have. And now, when we look at an establishment, if the establishment is 20 seats, we can say, this will work. If it's this type of establishment, then we know this will work. And that way, instead of just doing a waiver, we can actually give them an option. And that would be the opportunity to go with.
I prefer not, as one member of the Board, Madam Chairman, I would prefer not to waive grease traps, because we are under a consent order. Community has spent a lot of money to upgrade. So I would like to be able to have them have an affordable option to do business in our community and achieve what it is we want them to achieve.
Absolutely.
And that's why I was saying, Madam Chairman, that if we're happy with an external grease trap in the ground, why wouldn't we be just as happy with it in somebody's establishment at a fraction of the cost?
Selectman Castaneda, from my view, I don't disagree with you. But I believe that we do need to look at the bylaws and the regulations, because the way they're written now, I believe that our enforcement offices, their hands are tied because of the language...
What do you mean, though?
Pardon me?
What do you mean, their hands are tied in respect for what?
When they came to us before, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager.
That's correct.
When they came before us on that evening where there was a group over here, the, it was suggested that we look at the regulations, look at the bylaws, because the way they're written, if it says external, they need to require that it goes externally. It can't go in the basement. But again, when we have these, this education opportunity to learn more about why they can't go outside, will they be allowed to go in a basement under the consent order? I'm not an expert on any of this.
We asked those questions that night, though, and they made it clear that the regulation did not say external. It said external type. Didn't say it had to be put in the ground. And that's why I asked our health inspector, what's the difference if we put it in the ground or put it in someone's basement?
Madam Chairman?
And he thought about it for a minute and said, I don't think there is a difference.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the point I'm trying to make. The cost isn't in the equipment that we've already approved.
Right.
It's where you put it.
And is that acceptable? And I can't answer that. Would that be acceptable under our consent order? Would that be acceptable to all of these regulations that we seem to have to follow? I can't answer. But if we get this done by February 1st, if we have, would that be something that, would be an acceptable timeframe?
Yeah, I mean, we've waited a whole lot longer than that.
We waited so long, I know. It just seems so unfair, these people that being left in limbo.
Yeah, yeah.
Selectman Allen?
I think the concern with the Health Department was that the enforcement, making sure that they actually clean out the units, because if they're indoors, they can't get access to them, they can bypass them. So I think that's just, I think one of the things is, once we find the extra options for them, you know, when we do the bylaws, we have to come up with some sort of enforcement, so that they can come in on a regular basis, do their inspections.
So we have a twofold issue before us. We have to identify, and we also have to update an enforcement force, correct? Selectman Panetta, is there something you want to say?
Well, I think I've made it clear over the past couple of years that I have never been in favor of waiving external grease traps unless it was under a specific condition, like the subway, for example. However, I am willing to, because of the consent order that we are, I mean, our taxpayers, I mean, we had to pay, what, $27 million? I certainly don't want to allow that to continue. So I want to do whatever I can for the safeguards for the Saugus citizens. However, I am concerned about the businesses. I mean, I want our businesses to flourish, just like the rest of the Board does. So if there are alternatives that are going to allow us to not put the fog into our sewer system, I am absolutely open to listen to the different ideas that we have, as long as we're, they work just as well as the external grease traps. Because I certainly don't want to burden our businesses with extra money if we don't have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I think you know that the wishes of the Board, and I would like to, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to ask you to get that information to us as soon as possible. I know you have a lot of other priorities, but quite frankly, this cannot wait until the date is set, the information comes within 24 hours. We need to have plenty of time to get a handle on the information that's provided to us. So as soon as you have the information, even if you want to communicate with the Board as to where you are, I'd like regular updates, and I'd like it done on a consistent basis. Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry.
Selectman Dever?
If I could just, if I'm hearing you correctly, it will be by February 1st?
No later than February 1st.
Thank you.
And our information will be on a consistent and frequent basis until this issue is resolved, because people are waiting on us to take action. Was there something you want to say, Mr. Manager?
Just, not to throw another wrinkle into this, but I, thinking it out loud, moving forward, is that whatever, if you do probably, if you do come up with a decision on an alternative and acceptable, then there's probably gonna, likely you're gonna have to have a change in the regulation.
Well, that's what we just discussed.
In a public hearing and whatnot, in an approval process, you know, that's gonna probably be even, you know, lengthy, you know what I mean, just so that everybody's aware.
Okay. Maybe you didn't, I know that we've been throwing stuff at you. February 1st is the target date to have this educational meeting. Certainly, moving forward, there would be regulations that we already have in place that we have to follow for guidelines. But February 1st is the deadline that we would like to see the meeting take place by. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Thank you so much. Moving forward, and thank you, folks, I'll hear from your patience. We have a public hearing for Prince Pizza for a transfer of stock request. Dear Chairman, the Police Department reviewed. They have no objections or recommendations at this time. I see Mr. Castro-Birdie's here. Would you like to come and speak to us? Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members. Steve Castro-Birdie from Prince Pizza. Did you have questions for me, or did you want me to address the situation?
Explain to us exactly what you're requesting of us, okay?
Basically, what I have a gentleman right here, Mr. Cliff Rucker, who's a, is a friend and will be a minority shareholder of Prince. In order to go ahead with the transfer of some stock, we needed to go before the Board. So that's, that's basically, we're just looking to continue to grow the business. And he's a, he's gonna be a minority shareholder of the, of the restaurant.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Looking through the paperwork, Inspection Services has no objections or recommendations. The Police have no recommendations. The Board of Health, no objections for the transfer. It looks like everybody has pretty much signed off the file, no objections. Does the Board have any questions?
Just a comment.
Selectman Dever?
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to compliment you on the completeness of the application. There was no document that wasn't there for review. Thank you very much. It's nice to have everything and be able to fully look at an application and base your decision on it.
Wendy's, or Mrs. Reed is very, very good
Good job.
at making sure
Good job.
Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, so I give her a lot of credit for that.
Great. Madam Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing.
Oh, I apologize.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody in the audience here to speak in favor or against the request? Seeing none?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the request...
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, close the public hearing.
Selectman Dever makes a motion to close the public hearing, seconded by the Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Mrs. Dever?
Mrs. Deba.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the request for the transfer of stock for Prince Italian Food, Saugus Inc., doing business as Prince Restaurant, 517 Broadway, based on the information we've been presented.
Seconded by the Chairs, there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next on the agenda, we have a 7:55 public hearing on Pro Collision Center at 23 Hamilton Street. Sullivan Neves for the transfer of a Class II Auto Dealer's license from Pro Collision to Ralph Severino is the applicant here.
My name is Sullivan Neves. I live in Revere, Massachusetts, in Revere 57 Howard Street in Revere. I'm a married, three kids. I used to have a body shop in Malden. And now I'm seeing a good opportunity to do my business in Saugus at the Pro Collision Center. And also has the dealer that I can sell a couple cars in there and, you know, be better for me and my family. And I see opportunity to grow my business at the Pro Collision Center. That's why I'm requesting to transfer the dealer's license from Ralph Severino, ex-owner, to under my name, Sullivan Neves, the new owner.
I do see here there are a couple of things that are mentioned. There is a comment from the building inspector. Any change in signage? But I also see more concerning is the fire department. You are required to have a flammable liquids permit and proper fire extinguishers. Is that something that you've already addressed?
No, there is something that I can't, I have everything in there for the fire department except for the license for the, for the license that they're asking there for the flammable. But I just don't know how to get it. So I'm going to do my research and get the license that I needed. I supposed to have it as an ex-owner that he's supposed to have already, but I don't think he had. So it's something that I can't address.
Madam Chairman.
Sleckman Castaneda.
Have you spoken to the fire department about it?
No, not yet.
That's probably the easiest thing for you to do, is speak with them. And I'm sure they'll point you in the right direction.
And I'll go ahead and get it done.
Madam Chairman.
Sleckman Deba.
Good evening. I had an opportunity yesterday, I'm sorry, day before yesterday, to visit your establishment. And I just had a couple of questions I'm hoping you can help me with. The restriction on the license from Pro Collision is no more than 10 vehicles for sale, and that there would be no storage of junk cars or car parts. Now, there are two Land Rovers and a Toyota lateral to the building and a very, very old, I know it hasn't moved in years,
It's gone.
tow truck. Will those be removed from the property?
The thing is, Pro Collision Center is the left building. The door, the big door on the right, and the small door is sprayboard. On the other side, it's a Camaro auto service. It's different business. It's a two business in one. So that's something that is not in my hand to take care of it.
I understand the Camaro Auto. I couldn't find any information or a license for them. So it looks like you're renting a portion of the building?
Yes.
And there's a secondary business running there?
Yes.
So are you saying that those vehicles?
They don't belong into Pro Collision Center. But I can talk to the guy and have him move it. I can tell him that I came here today, and you guys addressed this problem, and you guys want the thing in there, move it. I can talk to the guy in there and just tell him, no, he's got to move it or he's going to start getting fee for the storage, you know, like junk cars in there. I know the car is there for some time.
Okay. Could I just ask you, there are about 40 or 50 tires out front facing Hamilton Street. Are you going to have a storage container for those?
That's Camaro's issue, but I can try helping him. Because I'm in there for like four, five, six months.
The tires in the front inside your, inside the chain link area for Pro Collision are his?
No, ask me one more time. Where is the place that I'm concerned?
Let's just talk about where you're renting your property.
Okay.
It faces Hamilton Street, in the chained-in area. And the previous owner, and what you're asking for is a 10-car limit for sale of used vehicles, correct?
Yes.
Inside that chained-in area is a very large white storage container covered by a blue top.
Yes.
And next to it are about 40 or 50 tires?
If you're going back today, half of it is already gone.
Half of the tires are gone?
They was there before me. Everything is in there. I don't know if you, but I think, you know, you know the area. That building there, it's like old building, now already painted white. I painted striped blue. And I'm trying to update the place, you know. My plan is just to paint the fence white because I want to bring the place up again because it was, you know, a big mess in there. I already take a lot of junk off. And the tires that was there, half of it's already gone. I threw it away yesterday. I took off the snow, there was a bank of snow there, so I took it off and threw it away. But that one's going to be gone.
So as you know, it's a residential area, and we want to welcome you to the neighborhood, but we'd also like to see the area improved upon. And I think just by removing some of those vehicles and possibly having that secondary business that apparently is in there do their part would be very helpful.
I will. I will do it.
Thank you.
Any further comments from members of the Board?
Just one comment, Madam Chair.
Sleckman Panetta.
So the license here is hours of operation Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Saturday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Must have clear title to all cars for sale. As Sleckman Deba said, limit of 10 cars must meet conditions of the fire department and cars for sale and so forth. You are going to continue with what the restrictions that are in this license in terms of the hours of operation and the 10 cars and so forth?
Yes, I'm still, I'm going to keep all the same. The name is the same. I'm not planning to put any sign on it. So everything will be the same, the name, hours of operation. Cars, I guarantee there won't be not 10 cars in there, it would be less than 10. But, you know, and then I plan to have everything as a, it's in the paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak in favor or in opposition? Please come to the podium, sir, and give your name and address.
My name is Mari Berros. I live at 234 Hamilton Street in Saugus. I work for Manaswara Resource Authority as well. And the reason why I'm here, you mentioned that old cars in the back. I talked to the mechanics out there, I said, I want this stuff out. Because basically, it dropped me the value for the property. No answer. He says, oh, we're going to move, we're going to move. They had been there like over five years. Before him, before Sullivan, it was half Duplin was to own, rent that place. And there was so many junk, I keep telling him, you got to move. I tell Sullivan the same thing, I say, I want to see this place looking professional. Because up front, up front of my house, you can look in the garage. The only thing I look at, it's just the junk every day. I want to make sure this place is being professional.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to be heard? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
It's a move, Madam Chairman.
Sleckman Castaneda moves to close the hearing. Seconded by the Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Where are the wishes of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion to grant the application of Pro Collision Center, Inc., 233 Hamilton Street. Sullivan Neves owner for transfer of Class II Auto Dealer's license from Pro Collision Center, Inc., 233 Hamilton Street, Ralph Severino, subject to the same conditions as the current business operates up to now.
And would you want to add the stipulations?
Same hours of operation and the same restrictions that the license currently, oh, you're talking about
We have stipulations here on the signage?
He just said that he's not going to change the sign. The sign's already there and is not changing.
And you are going to put on there that he does have to meet with the fire department to
Yes.
meet the requirements that were put forward in this application?
Yep.
Okay. That motion is seconded by the Chairs. There further discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Sleckman Deba.
I'd be happy to support the motion, and I wish you the best. But I would also say to you that I urge you strongly to have those tires and the debris removed and abide by the neighborhood's request.
It is my pleasure to clean the place up.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have the motion to approve by Sleckman Castaneda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero? Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Next, we have a public hearing, the application of Zayed Hamdan, owner with an office at 252 Kennedy Drive in Malden for a proposed business name of Global Transportation, Inc., to operate a taxi cab business in the town of Saugus and license for five taxi cabs. Is Mr. Hamdan here? Please, sir, if you'd come to the podium and give your name and address.
Good evening, Barak.
Good evening.
My name is Zayed Hamdan. I live in 252 Kennedy Drive. And I would like to thank you to give me the opportunity to speak in front of you. So do you have any question for me?
Madam Chair.
Sleckman Allen.
Yeah, one of the concerns I had is, you were requesting five cars and you're planning on putting one car on the road now and as business got better?
At the beginning, yes. You know, I'm requesting for five, but as a beginner, I would like to start with one. So when business grows, I would like to put the rest of the cars. So for now, either one or two, you know. I'm not really sure if I'm going to put one or two, but I don't want to put all five at once, you know. I would like to see how business is.
I understand, because I would actually feel more comfortable if we gave them, each time you wanted to put another vehicle on the road that you came before us.
Yeah, it's fine, you know. I request your
It's just to put five out there.
I respect your opinion, but do I have to go through the whole process, like every time I need to put like a car on the road?
Would you, so that's the reason why they tried to go with the flag at first?
We have to go through the whole process.
Okay, I didn't understand that, okay. Now I understand that part of the process.
Madam Chair.
Sleckman Panetta.
I do see that you're going to have the one taxi that you're going to keep in Malden. And because it's in Malden, you can't register it in Saugus because that's typically one of the things we ask. Right now, we have a total of four cabs on the road, but we have five, six, seven, eight, and 10 that we have voted in, so that we have, right now, we can have up to 10 in Saugus. So you'd be adding to what we have already voted in, which I don't have a problem having more. However, you know, you have one in Saugus. I would, to be honest with you, I would feel more comfortable, as Sleckman Allen said, to vote for no more than two this evening and for you to come back after the two. You know, you said you want to get started, so you have the one. You said in your documentation, you'll see how well you did, and then you'll put another one on. I think we should just see how well you do. I would feel comfortable voting in two this evening.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you. And Chairman.
Sleckman Deba.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could I just ask you just a few questions, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
Were you given a copy of our taxi bylaw? Are you aware of our bylaw, our taxi bylaw and what our rates are?
Yeah.
So you're comfortable with that, those rates?
Yes, and I've been driving a taxi in Cambridge, you know.
I see that for 13 years?
13 years, yeah.
So you're very experienced.
Yes.
And again, you know, I think it is always welcome to have
Thank you.
a quality service available. But I would support no more than two at this time.
I respect.
Is there any further discussion? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you would come up and give your name, address at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Karina Flecker. My address is 9 Warmstead Street. I currently work with Saugus Center Taxi on 961 Broadway. And I would like to oppose this petition. Right now, we have three or four taxi companies in Saugus. Saugus Center Taxi has its 30-year here in Saugus. Two of those companies, one is operating without a license, the other one fed off of us, of our company. We've always been very, very excited to work here. We've been very careful about not occupying space with taxi stands. As we agreed when we obtained the Hackney licenses, we would go to the hotels, park our cars there in order to avoid disruption. Another one of the things is we've given back to the community. We have 20% discount for senior citizens. We have students who sometimes don't have what to pay us with, and we help them. So I believe that we've given back to the community on Saugus. As of these, as of this evening, our way bill had one job on it. So adding another taxi company would affect us. And I do believe that we've given back to Saugus, and I do hope that we are considered because of that. That's, thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I ask one question?
Yes. One moment, please, Madam.
Thank you very much. It's my understanding that you have, we voted, the selectmen have voted you five cabs and currently who have two on the road?
Saugus Center Taxi, yes.
When are you looking to put a third on the road?
We are looking to put a third on the road as soon as business picks up because right now it's been very slow.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor or speak against the applicant? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
It's a move, Madam Chairman.
Sleckman Deba moves to close the hearing. Seconded by the Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
What is the wishes of the Board? Do I have a motion on this?
I think there's been some discussion as to how many taxes you want to allow on the Board. I think the people who made those comments may want to make the motion.
Madam Chairman.
Sleckman Deba.
I would like to make a motion to grant this applicant, Zayed Hamdan, the ability to operate a taxi cab business in the town of Saugus. And at this time, I would grant him two licenses.
Motion is seconded by the Chairs. There further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Sleckman Deba's motion to approve the applicant with two licenses only, say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is old business. Under the first topic is the American Ambulance Contract. And next to that on the agenda is the OIG Report. The OIG Report is being removed from the agenda this evening on advice from Town Council. Also, I would like to announce at this time that the other item on the agenda that is being removed is the, under new business, is the manager's evaluation process and criteria. Again, Town Council has advised the Board to take that off the agenda. Thank you. Under old business, on the ambulance contract.
Madam Chairman. Thank you. In reviewing the ambulance contract, which, Mr. Manager, I would like to thank you for providing to us, I did have a question I'm hoping that you can help me with to better understand. We had a very detailed conversation as a Board on November 26. The contract provided to us was signed on November 27, one day later. And in reviewing it, I'd like to ask just a couple of questions to help me better understand. And in reviewing it, I'd like to ask just a couple of questions to help me better understand. On page nine of the contract that was supplied to us, under the license to use town property, it is clearly defined the American Ambulance using town property, and it says through this agreement, they will be using, enter and use, the first floor garage and facilities, including two small rear rooms that shall remain in the control and custody of the town, and the exterior of the property located at 12 Hamilton Street, AKA the old central fire station. The concern that I have, it's twofold, is that we had our Board of Selectmen meeting on November 26, had a very animated discussion about the town charter. The town charter very clearly states the leasing of property would come before the Board of Selectmen. Actually, I'll get that section out. And I'm curious why, actually, I have two questions. I'm curious why the agreement does not reflect the section of the charter on the leasing of property and the 180 days and the approval of the Board of Selectmen. So I wondered why that wasn't included, first of all. It is page...
I don't have a copy of that, I'm sorry.
You don't, all right, this is the town charter I'm referring to, and it is the leasing of town property under the powers and duties of the manager. And it says, "Any proposed lease, rental, or other agreement to authorize the use of town property for a period exceeding 180 days shall be approved in advance by three-fifths vote of the Board of Selectmen at a regularly scheduled public meeting. The Board shall be provided the final documents containing such proposed lease, rental, or other agreement at least seven days before the public meeting, and if the selectmen fail to approve any such document within 21 days of the public meeting at which the document was considered, such failure shall be deemed a rejection." So we have the contract. It does not have the charter provision in it. And secondly, nowhere in the contract can I find a lease agreement for the, a monetary amount for the leasing of the old fire station. So based on this document, two questions: why it does not reflect the town charter requirement of 180 days or greater, and why there's not a monetary amount for the term of this contract, which is five years for the leasing of that property.
It's not a fi, well, the first part of your question is that generally, we wouldn't, in a, in a contract, you wouldn't be citing the charter in the contract. So, I mean, I don't, I guess I'm just sort of not understanding your question.
Okay.
In other words, the attorneys have, you know, put the language together and negotiated it. I would suggest that maybe you put that question to Town Council that, you know, reviewed the language.
So, again, I'll just clarify. The charter is very clear in the leasing of town property. Very, very clear. We had a conversation on November 26. On November 27, this was signed, and it's not reflective of the leasing of property with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. And there is no monetary amount for the lease of this building, and the contract runs, according to the document you gave us, December 1 of 2013 to November 30 of 2018. So that's a five-year lease that I have in my hand, a five-year contract with no remuneration for the use of that building?
No, the use of the building would be for the 180 days unless the approval...
So are you saying, if I, I wanna understand, are you saying prior to 180 days, you'll be presenting us with a lease document for our approval with a monetary amount for the lease of the building?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. The, the, the time that they're using the building now, they're putting monetary expenditures into the building that is above and beyond what the fair market value would be for that time period.
Okay. So when do you plan to have that lease to present to us? Do you have a timetable?
I would say likely, probably in the next month.
Okay. And one last question, and I appreciate your answers. One last question, the gas break incident in December where, in the old fire station, the ambulance had backed into the gas line?
Yeah, heating, heating element.
So that involved a police detail, a fire detail, there was a disruption to the community. Clearly, you know, accidents happen. But for the time our police and fire were there, and for the, obviously, repairs to the gas line, will there be reimbursement from the insurance company of American Ambulance where there was an accident?
Whatever expenses were incurred because of their, you know, their issue, they would be held responsible.
So the taxpayers would not?
That's correct.
Thank you. I appreciate the answers to my questions.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions on the ambulance contract? There were several requests made for information, and I know you have provided some of it to us. One of the things was the budget to actuals. When we spoke on that, Mr. Manager, you had stated that the format did not allow you to give us that just as a up-to-date...
Yeah, just to give, I guess, to make, you know, sort of clarify it, is that the system that we have for the accounting system is, you know, and I sent this an email to, I think all the board got this, that's part of the reason why we're moving to a new Munis system is that, is the inability to pull that kind of information out without, you know, numerous amount of labor hours or hours put into, putting it into a format, you know, as well as closing out the months and whatnot from an accounting standpoint. So, you know, we have a 30-some-odd-year-old system that's not even a Windows-based system, and this has been the problem, I think, and probably why nobody's seen a budget-to-actual document here in Saugus, particularly even when we did the, if you remember when we used to have the six-month review, we would get a document that we now find out really didn't, wasn't really the numbers. It was numbers that sort of made everything look like it was halfway and everything was on track. In fact, we know now from the forensic audit that that wasn't the case, so, in fact, when we were with the DOR, you know, with their requirements, they were requiring us to have quarterlies and budget to actuals. And once we were unable and had discussions with them on the budget to actuals for quarterlies, they said, "We completely understand. We know you're moving in the directions of Munis." They asked for a few different pieces of information and waived that and said, you know, "We'll just do a six-month budget to actual," which that's what we, we're in the works of doing now and putting together. So that's, that's the, you know, once we get to a Munis system, then we'll be in a much better position to be able to run reports, you know, and that's part of the implementation and setting up chart of accounts that we're able to hope generate and make reports generating much easier, so that we're able to use that data more efficiently to make financial management decisions. So if that helps, I guess, clarify.
I know you and I had talked because there's, there was a request for quite a bit of information, many of the, all of us here had some thing that we were requesting, and I know that there was a conversation, and I wanted clear to the employees. You had discussed with me that the employees felt a little stressed because of the amounts of information that was being requested by the board.
Well, I think it's...
Certainly, certainly, the board wants to get as much information as we possibly can to be able, and our goal is never to impact the employees of the town or to add to their workload. However, some of this information, we're unable, so I do wanna get the message to the employees, how much we do appreciate everything they do. And I know, as you said, the concern was that perhaps our requests were adding to some of theirs, just because they're trying to get involved with their new systems and the such, but please get the message to them. I know some of the requests, there was some confusion as to what was being requested because, one, the request, which will come up next, is the request for the employees. And I think that you misunderstood. You thought that the request was for townwide. The request was for the employees that had been hired from the time that you were appointed as the town manager, because that was, that was pretty much an easy task to achieve. We did get that information late this afternoon.
Madam Chairman, just a couple of things. In the sense of the requested information, part of it is it's not just the requested information, and I think just to get a context so that you understand, is that just, just the accounting system implementation of the Munis system alone is, and I'll just, you know, and I think you and I have spoke about this, is that the accounting department is the major department that is involved in every aspect of it. So we're just in implementation meetings, and this past, before the Christmas, they, their, their implementation meetings, and they include from 8:30 in the morning till 5 o'clock at night with, I think, three seven-minute breaks and a lunch break.
Right.
And that's Monday through Thursday, and then they're now back this week in the same format, just for this Munis, because it's, they're actually just in the implementation. Then they, this is, you know, a major endeavor. And then they'll be involved in each department when they get to a point of actually training, but right now, they're still in the setup and implementation part of the process. That, you know, obviously, that going on, we have the FY '15 budget that we're, you know, is, you know, is a major concern and, you know, a lot of work that goes into putting that together, that, we're in that process, as well as them trying to get the tax bills out this past, you know, and not that everybody likes to get those, but I think everybody got them this week. Putting the tax bills, as well as doing W-2s for year-end, as well as vacations that everybody, you know, takes in different offices. And just, just to give a perspective of, you know, what we're doing now compared to, you know, in the past, is we're doing a lot of different initiatives that are very taxing on the employees, as well as doing more with less than what we've had for staffing, you know, say, 10 years ago, or even, you know, six years ago, with the different offices and where there's, you know, you know, less, I think, you know, and that's sort of, I guess, as a perspective, I, we're certainly, myself and the staff are committed to providing whatever information the board has or needs.
And I certainly appreciate that, Mr. Manager, but again, I wanna reiterate that this information had been requested, some of it, quite a while ago, and perhaps if it had just been maybe done a little at a time. However, nobody is trying to overtax anybody, and I think that, as from the whole board, I would want the employees to know that that would be, that would never be the intent. However, some of the information, we were able to get all in one day. So that kind of surprised me. So I just wanted to get that message out, and I think I had already talked to you about that, to let the employees know how much we truly appreciate them getting us the information that's requested. But we do wanna see, I think that, just do it in the fashion, some of it has nothing to do with them. One of the things that was requested of you, and I have not heard back, I don't know if you were able to speak to Town Council, I had spoken to you as well at Town Council, the deed restrictions on the Wayloose property.
I did have a conversation with him, with you and with him, and I also had sent him an email, I think even prior to you speaking to him. I will follow up with and find out where he's at with that. I did have a conversation. He said he did some preliminary research on it, but I will follow up and find out where he's at with that research.
Yeah, that should be pretty accessible, I would assume, over at the Salem Court, correct, in the Registrational Office?
Yeah.
That's wherever it was registered at the...
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't know, and this is just talking from a practitioner's standpoint, it may not be, it may be documents that may not be accessible online. He may have to physically go down.
Right.
I'm not sure, but that might be, that might be part of it.
And that would lead into, I know that I'm going in a little bit of a jumping around here on this, because we have the Wayloose, that's very important to the Eustace Street residents. The Eustace Street residents were given information pertaining to that piece of property that may not be completely accurate, and I think we have talked about the fact that we do not want our residents to be unnecessarily concerned with things that probably are not likely to happen, and that was one of them, because they were told that the hill's coming down and that would impact the restrictive covenant. Why don't you explain to us where we are with Eustace Street?
As far as Eustace Street update, I think we did go over this at the last meeting. As far as the street itself, that it was about a cost of $11,000. What CDM had to look at and survey the roadway, but they had recommended that it would be better to wait until they know what development and what access to that road is gonna be used before we endeavor into that. But obviously, it's up to the board's wishes, how they wanna proceed. It's about $11,000, and you can take their recommendation and take that into consideration. Secondly, on the, in regard to Revere, our Economic Development Coordinator has reached out and is in the process of trying to get a confirmation on setting up a meeting regarding that development with Revere's Economic Development Coordinator, as well as the developer, so that, because the impact of whatever's gonna happen is gonna impact, or potentially, Saugus and Revere, so that we have a better handle on what's going on. So that's the update at this point regarding, but there is no, you know, plans that we're aware of, of any development that's moving forward.
Selectman Deba?
I appreciate your update, Mr. Manager. Could we get some feedback for you, from you again by February 1, as to if that meeting has been arranged and who the attendees would be? Hopefully, a time conducive to one of the board members being able to attend as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Again, with the follow-up on requested information, where are you at with the anti-harassment, anti-bullying policy that we discussed? I know you had taken that...
Yeah, I had forwarded that to council, and I can, you know, if you want, I can get a memo, his initial thoughts after reviewing it and looking at it, felt that, I think he looked at some of the legislative history as well after looking at it, and felt that it didn't have a lot of strong support. And from a labor standpoint, he felt that, an employment standpoint, that it's a one-size-fits-all and is very difficult to enforce, and that he wouldn't recommend at this time to put it, the one-size-fits-all, you know, policy, that would be difficult to enforce.
He said that there wasn't any support for it at the state level, is that what he's saying? Because that's under the committee.
The comment he made was that it was, I think, put into the legislature at one point before, or maybe during, I don't know exactly, but...
It was filed in January.
January. He said that there wasn't a ton of support at this point for the article, for the bill.
I think that, though, the purpose of providing you with that information was that a lot of corporations now do have anti-harassment, anti-bullying policies, and as we had the discussion that night that we initially brought it up, it does not have to be, that was given to as a template, something to use as a tool, not necessarily that particular policy, but to use that. And perhaps, as we mentioned earlier, you don't need to reinvent the wheel, to look elsewhere as to where anti-harassment, anti-bullying policies are in the workplace. We discussed it that night, that on the school side, it is the law that you have the, both the anti-harassment and anti-bullying policies. It's very commonplace to have these in corporate America, and I think it's important that the employees in our community have that same protections, because it's for the non-protected class that they're discussing it. So if you could make sure that Town Council does have that clarification, the purpose was not to just put Saugus let ahead on that language, that was not the intent whatsoever.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Deba?
Mr. Manager, did that go to Town Council or another council for review?
It went to both.
Okay. I know that on the Mass Municipal website, there are many examples of anti-harassment, anti-bullying that I was able to take a look at. So again, not reinventing the wheel, but using the resources that are available. So that should be something we should be able to get fairly quickly.
Sure.
Also by February 1, I would think.
I don't know if, and you would have an answer to this, these policies, as I say, are pretty standard in workplace environments, and again, it's to protect the non-protected You said you sent this to two attorneys?
Well, they sent it to the Labor... Well, they sent it to the labor attorney as well as town council.
And who is the labor attorney?
Jay Sullivan.
Jay Sullivan.
Jay Sullivan?
Mm-hmm.
Where's Mr. Sullivan out of, Mr. Manager? Is he local?
Boston, Holston, right.
Well, if you could just get back to us again, it was a thought process just to put it out there and bring us up to speed. Thank you. I think on the Elm Street Bridge, we'll let the town manager go through that on his report. Can you give us an update on emergency management, please?
Emergency management is currently located over at the Public Safety Building. They have an office there and as well as a training room that's available 24/7. All the vehicles are currently running. Just an update on during the past New Year's, this New Year Northeastern, EMA played a vital role in pre-planning by continually updating myself and the police and fire chiefs before, during, and after the storm, recording weather alerts and cold weather precautions. The town also, as you may have received, released a cold weather warning through the reverse 911 system to alert citizens of the deep freeze and wind chill dangers. Friday on the, January 3rd, they were out and about, looking at the affected areas. We had some minor flooding that happened down on the east side. They also spoke with some of the homeowners in the area and checking on their safety and well-being. The members were also on standby in case we needed a shelter setup. Thankfully, there was no serious flooding, no power outage reported, and no damage to the infrastructure.
And they're still located down at the cemetery with their equipment as well? Is that correct?
Some of their equipment is garage there as well as the Public Safety Building.
How the repairs going on that building?
Very well.
They are?
Yeah, we just, actually, the whole area, we had it since we, I think, spoke about it, we've had it paved, paved down there, that whole area, as well as they're working on, they're going to work on the heating system, but they had repaired the roof as well as, you know, cleaned the garage out itself. I think we talked about before that the garage had two junk vehicles that were taking up the both bays, as well as a leaky roof.
You said they're working on the heat? Is there?
Yeah, there's, there's no heating, there's no heating in that building.
So what are they currently using to heat the building?
They don't, I mean, the vehicles don't need, they don't need the heat, yeah. I mean, they're diesel, they're plug-ins if they need to be, but, you know, I mean, generally the same. It's more of, I think, the cover for some of the non, you know, closed vehicles.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on these issues?
Ms. Chairman, if I could just ask one question. You stated that they do have an office in the Public Safety Building to bring the three entities together, and they're using the meeting room for all of their organizational types of activities?
They have access to that room 24/7.
I understand they have access, are they using it? Because in looking at what they're using for, they have two portable heaters down there to give them heat while they're working on vehicles down the garage, so.
I hope that's not the case because they are, they've been directed not to work on any vehicles. There should be no volunteers working on emergency vehicles, and I put it, you know, I put a directive to stop that because it's a liability for the town.
So how do they, how do they maintain their vehicles, Mr. Manager?
The director has been told that any issues with the vehicles would need to be done by a mechanic at the DPW or sent out to a shop because of, obviously, you don't, I wouldn't, from a liability standpoint and a common sense standpoint, I certainly wouldn't want volunteers working on an emergency vehicle, whether it was the fire department, the emergency management, or the police crews, because obvious, obviously, if something happens or there's an issue with the, you know, someone does the brakes and the vehicle's brakes fail, the town's going to be in quite a jackpot.
Have they always, do they have budgetary allowances in emergency management to get their vehicles repaired and maintained?
They do.
And that has been past practice?
The past practice has been they have volunteers and they've sort of, you know, you know, quite frankly, I mean, when I went over originally, they had a gas leak and there's different issues with the, with the vehicles. And one of the things that I've discussed with the director is that we need to, and this is part of what we're organizationally doing, is trying to professionalize the, that department so that they have the proper resources, whether it's a vehicle they need or to have it properly maintained and repaired, repaired, that that is, takes place and moves forward with the next budget.
So their location down at the cemetery strictly for the storage?
That's correct.
Of the equipment and the vehicles?
That's correct.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman.
Selectman Panetta.
I'd like to ask a question that goes back to the very first issue that you posed to our town manager, so through you. The munis system, we talked about, you know, actuels to budget, and you talked about how you've been rolling it out. I know you've been doing a lot of work with the departments in terms of education. What is the timeline for that and when all the departments will be up and ready? I know that you're busy right now with the, with the budgets, and you just got off the tax bills and all that, but I was just curious in terms of your milestones and the timeline for that.
Okay, so two things, actually, just to answer a question that you raised, or an issue that you raised, just so they're clear, the budget, we're going to be putting budget to actuels together for the six-month review. So that will be available, they will be accurate information and something that'll be fruitful to look at. That, as you know, as being an accountant, a practicing accountant, you know, it take, municipalities are somewhat slower in closing the months generally. I think there's a, just, you know, conceptually and practically is that when you, say if you close at the end of, you know, November 30th, those books don't actually close until you're able to close that stuff out. And private sector, obviously, they may move off of a different, different than most municipalities, but that generally in a municipality here will take some time between four to six weeks to be able to put that stuff together. So we'll be looking at for a six-month documents, probably somewhere, you know, the first week in February, you know, so that's what we're planning. I mean, obviously, we've got a lot more tasks on hand, but we want to sort of get that out of the way. We want to, at some point, the audit is, we'll be completing their paperwork for the, for the financials, and we'll have that aspect also coming up. So that's just so that, I guess, to clarify on the budget to actuels. But as far as the munis system itself, we're on a schedule, and it's pretty, if you've been through a conversion, which you probably have had some conversions, there's a whole chart and a flow chart of where we're at. We're looking at July 1st as a go-date live for the actual financial aspect modular. And then the payroll would be sometime, I think, October 1st is our, is our go-date for the, for the payroll. And then there's different modules, like for the inspectional services and different ones that we have as part of the package that take, you know, longer training and whatnot that will sort of mix in, but that's, so there is a lot going on, but it is nothing you can do as far as the, you know, trying to allocate time and resources to, to make this happen. But it's, it'll put the town in such a better position to be able to make, you know, sound decisions based on data rather than, you know, I'll refrain from making the comments. But, I mean, you know, I think it's just, it's difficult, as you can imagine, to be able to make, have ready information all the time that's in a format that you can analyze, discuss, and present. So we're looking forward to the munis system.
Thank you.
And the other members have any questions?
Just a request, if I could. I realize that traditionally, the budgets to actuels get to the Finance Committee sometime in February, and I'm very appreciative of all the work that goes into doing that, having been, you know, the beneficiary of being able to have that information on the Finance Committee. But I would ask, and I think I had asked a short while ago for this, if you could give us each a copy of the current budget as voted by town meeting with any possible amendments? It would be just five copies, I'm sure that.
No, we, that was provided.
I don't, did we get it?
Yep.
I don't think I got mine, but I'll check. And if I need it, could I please get another?
We put the hard copies, I think we emailed it out electronically and put hard copies.
Okay, that I think I may not have picked up. So would it be in your office?
We can, yeah, I'm sure it's there somewhere. We can, we can print you one out, it's only, I think, probably, not too many pages. We have a couple new printers now.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Or just, if you could give it to Wendy and she'll put it in my tray? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to hold off on Elm Street until the manager gives his report. Next is the board meetings, dates, and times.
Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Castanetti.
I think it was a couple, it was a couple meetings ago, I don't know, they all run together, I guess, at times, but there was a, there was a mention made of changing the meeting time to 7:00. And I looked at the meeting calendar for the town, and it appears, correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears we're the only board that meets after 7:00. And I'd like to make a motion to bring it in line with the rest of the boards and committees in Saugus and start our meetings at 7:00 on our meeting, on our regular meeting nights.
Mr. Castanetti moves to change the meeting scheduled times from 7:30 to 7:00 PM. It is seconded by the chair. Is there discussion?
Ms. Chair.
Selectman Panetta.
I think I made it clear at the last meeting that 7:30 is near impossible for me, so if you do decide, if that is the wishes of the majority of the board, I will be late for those meetings. The Board of Selectmen, for as far as I know, have always started the meeting at 7:30. I mean, it goes back to Jeanette Fasano, who worked in Boston. I know that we have some public hearings, I know attorneys are coming from Boston, and it's very difficult for some people to get here on time, including myself. And I, town meeting meets at 7:30, I believe the school committee meets at 7:30, and I would really like to be here on time. I do not like to be late for a meeting. So, you know, it is up to the board on how they want to choose, but you'll have one member that will always be late and one member, unless I leave work early, and I typically have meetings on Tuesdays, and I won't be able to vote on the minutes, and, you know, if somebody's coming and there's public comment, not too much correspondence, people, not just me, but other people from Boston will be missing on a public comment, so, and they'll have to wait till later on in the meeting. So clearly, I'm not going to vote in favor of this change. Thank you.
I'm going to make one correction. I believe the school committee meets at 7:00 PM, not 7:30. And while I can appreciate what you're saying, I too worked in that area for many, many years, 20 years, I worked over in Cambridge. And when the meetings are getting started so late, everybody is here much later, including the public. And forgive me, Mrs. Panetta, but if it's going to work best for the people in the community not to have to stay too late, there have been occasions where we all have to rush a little and we all have to arrive for various functions. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be respectful of everybody's position and the things that we all have going on in our lives. This is two nights a month that these meetings take place for this Board of Selectmen, and I do know that you have been able to, because of, when we've had emails and such, you have been able to achieve the goal of being in town sometimes as early as 6:00 and no later than 7:00 for other events that we've had to attend. Do you not see that as a reasonable expectation when it comes to two evenings a month, when, like I say, there have been other things that we've had to attend that are scheduled at an earlier date? Our goal is to just take care of the business of the community.
Ms. Chair.
Mrs. Panetta.
On Tuesday nights, on Tuesday afternoons, I have meetings.
Mm-hmm.
On some of the other nights, I can leave work a bit early, come in early, I'll leave early, I'll work through lunch, whatever it needs to be. But Tuesdays, I have my staff meetings, I have different meetings with people that I, I cannot move the meeting. If it's my meeting, I call them meeting, but there are standard meetings that I have no control over.
Sure.
So, and I will make one comment, if, if it was one of you who couldn't make it, I would not be voting in favor of changing a meeting time if I thought that it would create havoc in your lives if you, if somebody had to come in. I can't judge the traffic. I never know coming out of Boston whether it's going to be light traffic, if it's going to be heavy traffic. As you know, they're closing the Callahan Bridge, more people are going to be going over the Tobin Bridge, it's going to get that much harder to get here on time. Again, it's, it's the wishes of the board, whatever you decide, but I hate being late. I absolutely despise walking at late, but I think I made my position clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Seeing then, we have a motion on the floor to change the schedule of the selectmen's meetings from the start time of 7:30 to 7:00 PM. All those in favor of Selectman Castanetti's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one. These dates, this will start at the February meetings because we did state that the January meetings we would keep at the 7:30 timeframe. I think that this is an opportunity to give this a try, and let's see how it goes. Thank you so much. Under new business, the only thing that we have here is the Bukhari Park update. Mr. Manager?
Sure, that is in the design phase now. We had to have the, had to have it surveyed professionally just so that it could be put into the, I don't know what kind of software, but it's a, like a landscape architecture software. So that's the, at the point now of putting, you know, putting those things in, design and outline for the park, and then we'll be moving, moving forward shortly.
Timeframes on?
I would say we probably look at moving, obviously, it's the winter, but, you know, getting something going for the spring as far as design and construction.
Ms. Chairman.
Selectman Deba.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Manager. What is the amount of money that is appropriated for the Bukhari Park project?
It's $100,000.
And earlier in your term, I believe before I was on the board, there was some discussion and concern you had over drainage in that area. So before we get to the landscape conceptual design, what plans have been made for drainage? Because as anyone who's familiar, familiar with the area knows, there is a significant drainage problem.
There's a little bit of a water problem now, that's for sure.
So what are the plans for that?
So we had the engineers go out and take a look at it, and surprising to me is actually the, the field itself has actually got half decent drainage, according to the engineers. The issue really has to do with, what they've explained to me, is years and years of the mulch that's been put, and it's like a bowl that's in the front and is sort of a drop-down, it's at even a lower level in that front part. And one of the suggestions and design suggestions is to actually, which we would need anyway, is to use that area as, as parking, so move the park forward so that the area that's actually fills up as a bowl and is sort of all the mulch that's been, thing to use that as sort of the parking area, and then they don't feel that the, you know, I mean, it's not going to be a complete fix of the drainage, but the field itself, they've gone out, when we, I've been out there when it's pouring rain and heavy rains, it actually, within a short period of time, has a pretty good drainage, you know, recovery. So that would be part of the deal with that issue, so that they would raise that for parking, and then you wouldn't have as much of the, the bowl that, that forms.
So do you envision, Ms. Chairman, if I could just ask two more questions, do you envision parking being created within the confines of the park to alleviate some of that on-street parking?
That's correct.
That takes place?
Which, which would be a benefit in general, even without the park enhancement.
Absolutely. And is there a pumping station down there?
There is some, some sort of a station that's in the middle.
You know the status of that because I have been told by members of Precinct 10 that there has been some difficulties with that, and I, I really can't visualize it. I mean, I believe it's further down in the field, but I wondered if there was a pumping station there that might need some attention.
I can look into that. I know that the new director is doing, you know, looking at all the stations and doing an update for, you know, getting, moving for the, for capital, you know, capital improvement information. you know, capital improvement information. But the only thing I was aware is that there's, there's some sort of a station that they service in the front, and we were talking about that, that it's unfortunate that's right in the middle, but it'll be, you know, we will put a gate that they would access it from the street, sort of back into it, rather than interfere with, you know, parking on either side, but...
And, and again, I'm sorry, one last question, because it keeps coming in. Where the playground equipment is now, and where the gravel is now. You envision that kind of coming away from that area, away from that home, towards the... And will we be looking at some handicapped accessible equipment?
Everything will be, um, we're looking at recyclable, and I think ADA compliant.
Terrific.
And as well as, um, and one of the things that we're sort of teetering over is, and to be honest with you, I mean, I would open up if that, you know, because you're familiar with that area or anybody that wants to get involved and sort of participate, I'd welcome that, because, you know, what we're trying to do is sort of figuring out whether it's worth moving the, um, the, um, basketball court and relocating that, because that would help with the parking also. And that's, if we're going to look at budgetary-wise, but I think that might actually make sense if we just moved it in and, and created that as the parking on that side also.
I can just tell you from my observations that in the spring, summer and early fall, that basketball court is heavily used, so...
Yeah.
I mean, as long as it exists, I think it will continue to be used. It's if it's eliminated.
Yeah, and we're looking at, like, even the lighting, in other words, they're on some of the poles, so there's a, you know, and I, you know, and I think I've said this publicly before, you know, you think like, oh, it's just, you know, not a big deal. These landscape architects that actually design parks, there's a lot to do with the shade and where you put trees and which way the sun sets.
Sun comes up, yeah.
You know, for baseball fields and, and different things, so... But, you know, that, that's, you know, I think it's, you know, at least, um... I think at least, hopefully, we'll be able to, there is a drainage problem in general, as you probably, everyone knows, that street. Um, they did put something in there some years ago, and sometimes that backs up also with the drainage. But it's just a difficult, um, uh, difficult design and infrastructure that we have down there that's, you know, sort of gotten away from us.
I appreciate the update, because the residents of Precinct 10 have been reaching out and asking, and, and are excited to think that there might be an upgrade to the area. So it's nice that they have something to look forward to.
The, the positive thing, good thing, is that we actually had, um, a CDM, as well as Audi and Dwyer that volunteered and gave their services with no charge, so that we were not drawing off the $100,000 to do the, uh, survey, and then also doing the architecture, landscape, you know, the designs for it. And the other interesting thing is, if any of you want to stop in my office, I'll have to pull it out, but... And I think I talked about this before, maybe with some of you, but, um, we were pulling all the designs to try to help with the survey, and we, they pulled some designs that were up, um, some plans that were up at the DPW. So when you look at the, the designs, um, and I think I talked to Mike, I may have showed, showed it to you one time, but the designs are phenomenal, as far as, um, you look at it, it's, they had a, um, you know, a croquet, and they had a wading pool, and all this unbelievable design. And you say, I'm saying, wow, this is not a bad setup. Swings here, and, and you look down at the date, it's 1935. It's, it's unbelievable. They have a whole walking area, and it's just, uh, it's the same setup with that house that's sort of cornered out. I imagine at some point, somebody must have owned that house and, and gave the property. I, I'm, I'm, my thoughts are, but, and I just looked at it, it says 1935. They had a lot of foresight and vision back then. It must have been a phenomenal park in '35. I don't know, you know, if anybody remembers it, or if it even, they put it together, but they, there was a design that was, uh, put together, so, interesting.
When you're done with it, you can send it over to the Historical Society.
Yeah, yeah. So again, if anybody is interested in the board that wants to sort of, you know, participate or, or, you know, get involved, I'm, you know, I got plenty to do, and, you know, I would welcome any, uh, any input or, or help.
Great. Thank you. Do any of the members have any questions they want to bring up? Any comments on these issues? Okay. We have the town manager's report. Mr. Manager?
Um, excuse me? Just trying to find, I think I...
Here you go.
Lost my special town meeting. Oh, here it is, okay. Got caught into the other...
Got it?
Page, yeah. Um, so, uh, the, uh, as you, as everyone is aware, and although you've been involved in, uh, in some aspect of, of working towards, um, very hard and supportive of moving forward with, um, you know, stabilizing, uh, the finances of the town, um, which I think, you know, we're certainly on track to do that. What I'm asking for is to, the selectmen to call for a special town meeting on January 27th, 27th of this year. And this is, um, you know, part of the, the major, um, you know, recommendation to the town and town meeting is the, um, to put a million dollars into stabilization of the rainy day fund, that, um, that would help enhance the town's financial, uh, position by putting the town in a much stronger financial position to possibly be upgraded with the town, town's bond rating, which, um, obviously would result in significant savings for the town and the taxpayers when we go to borrow. And, um, I'm sure anybody knows that, you know, to put a million dollars, this is something that's never been done, uh, before, and, and to put into stabilization at one time. So the board and, and the town supporting this would be, uh, I think, a, a great hurdle. So the, uh, there's a couple of other, other articles, but the first article that I'm recommending to be placed in the warrant is to see if the town would raise an appropriate transfer of available funds amount of $1 million, uh, to be transferred into the stabilization of Rainy Day Fund. Second article is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of providing supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2014 election and registration, excuse me, salary and expense appropriation to fund the upcoming special elections. These, uh, as you're aware, we've had, we have a state rep that, um, recently resigned, and this sort of come up in the last couple of, um, you know, a couple of days or last week, that we're going to have to have a primary as well as a final special election, and there'll be some expense, and we're trying to put those costs together now. And we're estimating between probably, you know, $5,000 to $10,000, um, in, we'll have, you know, as we move through with FinCom, we'll, we'll finalize those numbers. And as you know, uh, we try to put numbers on everything, but once you put a number, you can't go up, you only can go down, so, um, but that, that's what we're estimated at, and that'll get flushed out, um, through the budget process. Also, the, the third article is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of providing a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2014 town clerk salary appropriation to hire a new town clerk and provide for training. This is something that just came up also, is that town clerk, um, is, I gave notice that should be retiring. And so this is, would be, um, money that would be used as a one-time training cost, so that, obviously, that's a pretty significant position. Uh, so we'd want somebody to come in, uh, long, you know, longer than, um, you know, a couple of weeks or a changeover in a day to, to get familiar with that position. Um, and we're, and she's putting those numbers together also, but I would assume, if you look at an overlap of salary, you're probably talking $25,000, I would suggest, if, if we bring her in for, you know, two, a couple of months or more. Obviously, the longer the better, but, uh, well, she's putting that budget together. Um, the fourth article is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of providing a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2014 town manager expense appropriation to engage the U.S., UMass Collin Center to assist in the preparation of a five-year capital improvement plan. And as everyone's aware and has been involved in these discussions, um, in the board, this is something that's, um, not only, uh, necessary, but certainly recommended from a sound financial practices, and so that there's proper planning. This is a, a full-scale, um, from scratch, um, capital improvement plan to be put together. Its cost is, uh, in the contract is $37,000. I didn't put a number just in case we figure that there's any more involved or something that we would have to pick up at this point, but I, I would, uh, think that is probably be $37,000 for that. And that is, um, you know, just, uh, we've talked about this publicly before, but, um, part of it is we're starting from scratch, in the sense of we don't have an inventory in the town as far as what our assets are, or a condition that they're in. So we're trying, this would be a town-wide five-year capital improvement plan, which then we would have a template to be able to, um, you know, update each year as things get, um, fixed or, or completed. And, um, you know, it would give us the template, so, um, that, that's, uh, that's the fourth article. Uh, the fifth article is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer uh, from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of providing a supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year 2014 building maintenance expense appropriation. And this is, um, to replenish funds used for, uh, installation of equipment at the Ballard School for improvements of ADA, uh, compliance. And this is something that was talked about, um, actually, when you were on the Finance Committee about, there were some issues with, uh, needing an elevator or ramp to be ADA compliant down there. So we did, we talked about doing that. I think there was an article at the time, and we said, we'll take it out of building maintenance, and then look to replenish that as a capital expense, uh, in the, in the fall or, or further with free cash. And that, we're, um, we're putting those numbers together. I think it's probably somewhere a little bit north of 30, between $30,000 and $40,000. And if you've been by there, it's, um, I mean, the, the school, uh, absolutely loves the, uh, the ramp, and, and we had, um, some major issues in the parking lot, so we did some, uh, fixing of those cracks and dangers that were out there, as well as bells and whatnot for the door that's connected there. So that, those are the articles. I have, uh, had conversations with the chairman of the Finance Committee, as well as the moderator, uh, new moderator for the town meeting. And, um, I guess the only way I would explain it is that they're very excited and in a hurry to, uh, deposit the, uh, the first article into the Rainy Day Fund. As I'm sure you, you, the board is, as well as town meeting will be.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have a motion? Somebody want to make a motion here?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Selectman Panetta?
I would like to make a motion to insert these articles into our next special town meeting for Monday, January 27th. I don't know if we need to request the special town meeting as well, or that's already requested.
Um, I would say, you would, um, recommend, I'd recommend, so I suggest, take a vote on the special town meeting for that date, and then I would insert, and then have that vote, and then I would vote to insert the articles.
Okay, so...
And then I would vote to close the warrant.
Okay, so I'll start off by requesting for a special town meeting to be held on Monday, January 27th, 2014.
Seconded by the chair, is there discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, and then I'll make the second motion to insert the articles that our town manager just reviewed with us into this special town meeting warrant that will be held on Monday, January 27th, 2014, and also to close the town warrant.
I think we're going to do this in three?
Three, okay.
Okay. So you've made a motion that we accept the five articles as presented by the town manager for insertion into the special town meeting warrant scheduled for the 27th of January. Seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Go ahead, Mrs. Panetta.
And Madam Chair, I will make the third motion then to close the town warrant for January, the special town meeting on January 27th, 2014.
Selectman Panetta moves to close the warrant for the special town meeting for January 27th, 2014. Seconded by the chair, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
I just want to, um, Madam Chairman, thank the board. I appreciate the, um, you know, I think that, that vote will help, uh, hopefully, secure, um, the town and our financial stability, as well as make history as far as the amount of money that putting into stabilization for the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, continuing on the town manager's report.
The, I have a couple of names. Um, as you're aware, we've been, as the board has, uh, has been challenged with, you know, trying to attract, I think, volunteers. The people's day-to-day lives are much, uh, different than they were years ago, and so, um, particularly with the Board of Health, we're fortunate enough, fortunate enough to be able to have two names that, um, I'm appointing and with the approval of the, uh, uh, selectmen. Uh, the first one is, uh, they're both, uh, longtime residents, lifetime residents of Saugus, William Heffernan, uh, from, uh, 479 Walnut Street. He is an engineer. I did attach the resumes, um, and, um, uh, as well as the second name is David Zeitz, uh, from, uh, 208 Essex Street, and he is a biology teacher at the Vocational School. Um, I think, uh, which would make a good, uh, somewhat replacement for, um, the Frank Woods, which, uh, I think was a great contributor there, and also a science teacher, and had that type of background. So those are my, um, appointees that I'm putting forth to the board. This will also help, as you're aware, we had, uh, three resignations, uh, from, that'll take effect. This will allow the Board of Health to, uh, have a quorum and be able to have their monthly meetings.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever.
I think it's always exciting when we have new individuals who've not served in town government before come forward, um, and as the charter states, suitably qualified. So I commend you on having two new individuals come forward. I was just wondering if you could tell me a little bit about why you feel they'll be a good asset to the Board of Health? What, um, attributes they bring? As we all know, the Board of Health is a very important board, holds a very important role in our community, so I wondered if you could just tell us a little bit about why you feel they'll, uh, be an asset to the board?
Um, well, I think that part of it is their education and experience, and, and being in Saugus for such a, a long time, uh, that I think they have a, a good perspective, um, of the, the different issues that come about, come, come about with Saugus. I think with William Heffernan, he's a, um, a gentleman that grew up down in, uh, Precinct 10, down in the, uh, Bristol area, so I think he's pretty familiar with some of the major issues with RESCO, which is something that is obviously one of the major issues that the Board of Health deals with, even though he's living up on Walnut Street. So I think he's very familiar, uh, with that, as well as having some technical, uh, you know, when they have different disciplines and they bring that to the board, and they pick up from, uh, you know, some of the training from the other members that have been on there. I think that that makes a very good mix, and it brings different ideas and perspectives, and the ability and capacity to understand different technical issues that the Board of Health faces all the time. So, uh, that, uh, the other gentleman is a biology teacher, um, and I think that, that having that background and, and sort of experience, I think will, will bring a good compliment to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of members?
Madam Chair?
Selectman Panetta?
Hi. I would like to make a motion to approve the two folks that are presented before us, Daniel J. Schultz and William N. Heffernan, to the Board of Health that will take place immediately and expire on December 31st, 2016. I am very impressed with their resumes, and I am also excited that we have two new people that are interested in becoming involved with Saugus, so... And, and again, I think their resumes are very impressive, so thank you.
Would like to ask, um, the clerk, I know this requires a roll call vote. Are they usually done in conjunction, or is it done separately for the, is, does it make any difference? Okay, then I'm going to second the motion to appoint, um, Daniel Zeitz and William Heffernan to the Board of Health, and their terms expire in 2016, correct? Thank you so much. This motion was made by Selectman Panetta, and I second it. And Mrs. Reed, if you could call the roll.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Castanetti?
Yes.
Ms. Dever?
Yes.
Ms. Panetta?
Yes.
Ms. Fialla?
Yes, it's okay. Yes, Mrs. Fialla said yes. Thank you, wish them well. Okay, continuing on town manager's report.
Okay, this is an opportunity now just to give an update on the Elm Street Bridge. Um, I know that, um, we forwarded some correspondence to you. I know that we forwarded some correspondence to you. I think the most, well, one of the significant correspondence and responses was from Paul Rupp that talked about that he had had a conversation after numerous calls, he finally made contact with a MEMA representative regarding the timetable that the board was interested in. He spoke with somebody that's at the Hazers Mitigation Grant Department, and they basically, I think what he had suggested at the meeting was that they probably wouldn't give a date, but they told him that the decision, you know, the board should make is imminent, that they would need to know something that's going on, whether we wanted to withdraw or continue to move forward. With that, one of the board's requests was to get information on some alternatives, and that documentation was sent out, which I had done a quick review on it, and I figured that you would maybe anticipate some questions, because it was a little bit confusing whether it was an add-on or not. So I just asked them to put a clarification together on the memo to be sure of what the actual cost. You know, I mean, I guess from, from my standpoint, reading this, you know, I was, you know, obviously they're putting something together, and it's sort of qualified, but, you know, they do talk about that the technical uncertainties that could significantly impact the costs. So, I mean, that's something to consider, but they had a couple other alternatives. One was at 1.2 million, and that's the high-capacity culvert that replacing it, and then the, as well as an Elm Street relief culvert, which I think is more of the, like the Shoe Brook type of approach. And I think they were looking at 1.5 million. And I think how it's broken out in the, in the clarification document is total cost 1.1 million plus 1.2, so it'd be 2.3 million total that they're estimating. And the, the second option was 2.6 million with 1.1 plus 1.5 million. So that's, I think we're at at that point, at this point for the board, and to sort of, I think, digest that. And I would, you know, just from conversations and the process, I think probably at the next meeting would be a time to, to sort of make a decision, just so that we don't put ourselves in a position where, you know, we're holding them up, or that, you know, if we withdraw, I don't think that that's, you know, the worst-case scenario, but, you know, if we, they grant it and then we don't want it, I think then it, you know, it may cause, because other people are waiting in line for funding and whatnot. So I think that's where we're at. I don't know if it makes it any easier to decision, but it's, I think, just obviously, as you guys have discussed, and we've heard, heard from the public, it's, you know, difficult because of the, you know, weighing the issues.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Depp.
If I could, Mr. Manager, in taking a look at this a little further, reading back through the minutes of previous board meetings and coverage of this issue, one of the things that it looked like the previous board struggled with, and one of the suggestions was that there would be a townwide drainage study and plan moving forward as a possible option to help upgrade situations just like this with drainage. Did that ever really have an opportunity to take place?
It, it didn't, but there has been, I've have, I've had conversations regarding, and, you know, probably not the best thing everybody wants to hear, but there are communities that have stormwater drainage plans put in place, and they include assessments, which I think, and like I think Newton has one, there's a few different, and I've had this conversation, that residentially, it's not that expensive, but commercially it is, and it's based on, I think their average home in some of these communities is like $25 or $35 a year, and that helps go towards the cost. And then anybody that has more driveway or hot top and takes up more, less pervious area is assessed more and much higher assessments. But that money goes to the infrastructure of improving drainage systems, and I know Sogus isn't unique in the sense of what we're struggling with is the same thing everybody else, other communities have struggled with, and that's sort of why they've implemented a bylaw and whatnot, but is that this is one of those costs that we do, you know, through the planning process, and everybody develops, but nobody has put any money into the infrastructure of drainage, and that's where everybody's struggling, because you have less roadway, I mean, less woods and things that are pervious, and then you have more hot top, and that water has to go somewhere. So it, this is one of these things that's a huge expense, and it's different than the water or sewer enterprise where it's sort of a ratepayer, and there's a system that pay, you know, sort of, you get assessed for what you use, or to some extent, and that's used for infrastructure. So that's where, where it's at now, and that's something we can, you know, have further discussions, but I think that's the difficult issue, is that it's huge, just like it would be the same costs in, in the same parallel of water and sewer infrastructure improvements we're doing, that's what drainage infrastructure costs. So that's something we can look at. I mean, it's not the, probably the favorite topic for people, but that is one way that other communities are funding it and dealing with the issue and the problem that seems to be very, you know, very successful at, at least getting a start on this.
So, Madam Chairman, if I could, so as we weigh this decision, you'd like us to be able to make it our next meeting. We don't currently have a drainage study or a drainage plan, maybe something we're looking to in the future, correct?
With the board's support.
And we don't have a hydrology study or a traffic study on this particular, okay, I just, I wanted to be very clear of my facts, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members, have any questions at the town manager?
We asked, Madam Chair, for the hydraulic study and the traffic study at the last meeting, and they said that would be too cumbersome. It costs too much money, and that would have been really important for us to have, to make this important decision that impacts the neighborhood and really all of Sogus.
Madam Chairman, also, at the next meeting, if that's when it's going to be taken, just let me know ahead of time if you want me to try to have any of the individuals here, if there's any additional questions.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I don't see that there would, but there might be. So just, you'll let me know in advance, so I can...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. There's nothing else for you to report this evening, Mr. Manager? Okay, thank you. We now come to...
Just, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I just, one other thing is that, you know, with the capital improvement plan, we're going to be moving forward that, so obviously the board's going to be involved in that, so we'll probably have an initial meeting and sort of, and then want to, you know, they're going to want to, you know, it's a full scale where they get the building committees and all, everybody involved in this, so just, I'll keep you posted, but we're going to be, going to be, you know, quite involved, even though they're assisting us in putting, I think that the idea that it's us that do the work, they sort of have the model and gather data and put it into a format, but it's us that does, the department heads and committees and boards that give input into this process.
Sure. I think as you bring that up, it brings something to mind that you might want to think about. We've talked about the emails in the past, instead of just being on specific topics, it may be a good idea to develop a schedule that you would email a summary perhaps to the members of the board each week, giving us what has taken place during the week, what we should be paying close attention to, what you need input in. I think that that might be very helpful for the members of the board. So just food for thought, because you do have so much coming up that you're going to need our input on, and it gives us, make sure we stay in touch, make sure you do as well, so that'll be great.
Great idea.
Okay, we're coming up to members' comments. I'm going to start with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to Friday on the 3rd of, of January, with the storm, I had the privilege to go to the DPW to take a look at the operations. I was totally, I was totally impressed with the folks there. I was totally impressed with the, the effort that they put in. I think they were on Hour 23 at the time that I was there, so they do, and they were dedicated. I have the, I also had the opportunity to talk to some of the folks. Just amazed at how much they actually care about what's going on and trying to keep track, and there was a ton of phone calls that were coming into the DPW, and they were trying to react to all of them. The only concerns that I had was looking at all the equipment. This was the second, when I went into the bay, they were actually working on the sidewalk plow, and I guess this was the second time that it broke down. Looking at some of the trucks, I guess we have two trucks out of action now, we had one truck from the first storm that caught on fire, and then we had another truck that got hit by an SUV, which took a plow out of place. So with that, I had, I had a slight conversation with the town manager, and I just would like a follow-up, if we could, with the board.
Sure. Part of, I think that the needs of the entire town and every department, and we've had this discussion, and I think people have talked about this, that we're sort of, you know, 10 years or 20 years behind in a lot of issues, but one of the things, part of this capital improvement, part of what's going on now, is the new DPW director is actually getting a head start, and he's putting together a whole list of all the equipment they have, what age it is, when it would need replacement, what the cost of replacement of, and also trying to prioritize those, and that's including with the cemetery. So, and what the actual needs would be, and that's going to be part of a larger plan as a capital expenditure or, or equipment purchase to move forward, because like, again, I think, I said this before, we purchased the police cruisers, when I got here last year, or in 2012, we had one vehicle in the entire town that was under a warranty, and that was, I think, a vehicle at the DPW that was bought under a, under a snow and ice issue, or something that was bought like four or five years ago, it was on a lease, and that was the only vehicle that I think that we had under a warranty. So that's, if that gives you an idea, that's how aged and maintenance problematic our vehicles and equipment are in the town, that's going to need support, and, you know, moving in a direction to put this as part of a whole capital improvement, that I think we'll have a better vision and a better idea of where we are within, you know, a few months.
And is, is there considerations that are being taken with the budget to have preventive maintenance programs moving forward and replacements for all these vehicles?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things organizationally, and I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves or to get into discussions that haven't, that aren't in place, but I, I would envision that at some point, that we would be looking at, you know, a computer software system that would be a complete town vehicle maintenance system and having that centralized, so that it's just much more efficient and more organized, where you have mechanics that work on vehicles, and that's their job, you know, and that's something I think that won't happen in the short period, but I think long-term, that's something that I think would benefit the organization and the, and the town.
Yes, Madam Chair, would I be out of line about getting an update on the casino?
It's not on the agenda, and I think that...
On the agenda for the next time.
I mean, I could make a comment. Yeah, I mean, I could just give a general thing, is that, you know...
There's no action needed anyways, so...
Yeah, that, you know, the town and town officials have been meeting with officials from the casino that's planning to go over into Rivera in the process, and, you know, I think that those discussions have been positive, but obviously, you know, we want to, you know, make sure that as a surrounding community, that we're able to mitigate the impact that the town and the residents are going to face. So that's, I think, a general update, that that's where we're at, and we'll just continue to move forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman. Selectman Depp.
Mr. Manager, just a few things if I could, and thank you, Madam Chairman. Could I get an update on the November 18th special town meeting, where town meeting appropriated $174,000 based on the Collins report? I know there was a recommendation for four hires within the DPW. You did say at that time they would not be hired all at once, it would be incrementally, but knowing how little staff they have, is there a plan to at least hire some additional workers, or offer those that were laid off their position back with that 174?
Yeah, currently, right now, we're in the process of putting together some updated and new job descriptions, so that they can be posted, so I think we're probably...
Close?
Yeah, I mean, close, and then it's a matter of the director and which, his direction and resources that he wants to move forward first, and throughout the process, taking into consideration the report.
Just because, as we know, they're very short-staffed, and I think it really does show during times of stress like a storm.
And I, I just would add that you sort of opened the door, and I take the opportunities, that I think that, you know, very proud and very thankful and grateful for the DPW and the workers, and as well as building maintenance and custodial staff, that the job that they've done with the storms, they just, I mean, really have done an outstanding job, and we, I think, really started the gel last year in, in that department with the storm and the ice and snow and the sanding, and they did a great job moving forward comparatively, if anybody drives in other communities, even, you know, not neighboring communities, I just think it's, it was night and day compared to what we've done for snow removal and ice removal, so I commend the, you know, with the, the entire, the department and the employees. It's a lot of hours, and they get one hour, and it's tired.
I think anytime we as board members don't get a lot of calls during a storm, that's a pretty good indication that people are understanding and pleased, and it's never going to be perfect. I got more calls, though. I was telling other board members on whether people's trash would be picked up. That was the burning question on Friday morning, and so I thought, gee, how could we let people know when there's a time like this that trash, I called JRM, they were lovely. They said, we'll pick it up, but it will be late. So meanwhile, people were trying to shovel and throw the trash out onto the streets. So I'm just saying that was the concern.
Yeah, maybe we can look at like a robo-call, because it's interesting, and I've had this...
Or put it on cable, because you have that banner running about the snow ban, you know, something, because that was a big concern for people, was their trash, but not their plowing, only one call on the plowing.
Yeah, we've, I think part of it is last year, we, the, the department and, you know, one of the things that they have working on, and I think it's, it's paying off, is, and the other thing is that we've really focused on trying to organize the snow removal and plowing at the schools, because that is something that, you know, because of the amount of snow, but one of the things that they do, you know, they are, is trying to track sort of the frequent calls, and that way they're trying to deal with those issues and address those issues each storm before you get the calls, and, and I think that that's sort of worked, because we, I mean, I mean, I could, I could forward you some of the emails. We've gotten in my office, the calls and the emails from residents just really thrilled with the snow removal and praising the DPW and the town, and the town's efforts, so that, that's always positive, and we've been pretty responsive, and the department's been very responsive to those issues.
I just have a few other things if I could, and they're requests, Mr. Manager. Could we have Inspection Services take a look at two areas? One, it's 60 Salem Turnpike, where we've had a couple of fires. That is a gateway to this community, and for a very, very long time, we have had trucks and dumpsters that are not enclosed, we have trash, we, it appears to be a secondary business operating out of there, and people from Precinct 10 wonder why it's not being addressed.
What I can tell you as an update, is the new code enforcement officer is now sent out, he's in the process of sending out certified letters to 60 Salem Turnpike, as well as a list of places for abandoned property issues under the bylaw, as well as container issues that, you know, that are now being sent out and noticed, so that that's, we're moving in, I think, the positive direction now.
And I know our bylaws call for enclosures of dumpsters, so this is a budding a waterway, it is a visual eyesore, and there is a business operating there that I, or it certainly appears that way, that cars are there, large trucks enter and leave, so I'd like, not only code enforcement, but I'd like the Board of Health to take a look at that, you've got a waterways, and if there is a business operating there, they duly licensed to do so, whatever that business may be. It's almost hard to believe that the environmental police have not addressed the issue as well, given its location. So I would ask for that issue, and following up on one of our applicants tonight, 233 Hamilton Street, there is a secondary business there, there are a number of cars that do not appear to be registered, no plates, they've been there a very, very long time, and if they could take a look at that whole issue, and that is, I believe, Amera Auto, Amera Auto.
Is that, that's at the corner here? Is that, that's at the corner here?
Pro Collision, down the end of Hamilton, just before you get to Boston Street.
Okay, I know it.
Okay? And so it's one building, Mr. Manager, and we licensed that transfer tonight, but it's around the corner. Same building, but you have to go around the corner.
Okay.
And lastly, if I could, Mr. Manager, I know in previous years, and I'm sure it's not new this year, our state delegation has always asked us to put together kind of a desired list of projects that we might like to see happen in our community. And they would really like that information from us. So I'm wondering if by our next meeting, you could speak with your department heads or youth and recreation and see in particular what our state delegation might target this year in the budget for us, so we can get that information to them. And I know in past years, there's usually been a meeting with the state delegation, the school committee, town manager, and the Board of Selectmen to decide, not decide, but to discuss the state budget moving forward. And I think that would be a very good idea that we try and arrange that.
I can work on a list, as well as if the board has anything, if you want to forward that to me, so that we sort of combine the efforts and put it into one document.
Well, Madam Chairman, if I could, I know a number of young families have certainly approached, I think, any number of us and talked about the condition of our playgrounds. I think we all know that we don't even have one playground right now that we can say, wow, this is terrific. A number of suggestions have come forward about taking a look at Annaparker and making that really a park that would be more attractive. Another suggestion I got was, and I know we don't want to call attention to a gem like Prankers Pond, but even something as simple as benches at Prankers Pond, where people could really enjoy the beauty of that spot. So maybe we could look at playgrounds. But I think the answers lie with young families, and they lie with our youth and recreation in that area.
Believe me, I know. It's difficult, you know, as far as the parks and playgrounds.
Just a suggestion.
It's a challenge. Yep. So if the board has any things, if you could forward those in writing, that would be great. And then I can incorporate them into, you know, a needs letter, if that works for the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Panetta?
Thank you. I have one question through you to the town manager, and then one comment. The question to the town manager, in our packet, we were talking about Elm Street Bridge, but we also got from Paul Stedman, Acting District Highway Director. We got two reports. One is on the Hamilton Street Saugus River Bridge, and the other one is on the Boston Street Saugus River Bridge. And they talked about some deficiencies, specifically here line cracks. These letters went to James Waugh, and I was wondering if the DPW had any concerns with some of the deficiencies that they pointed out, if you've had any conversations with them. Is there something that we need to be proactive about?
I will inquire and find out. But I knew, I do know that on certain things with DMs and different bridges, there is some assessment that does take place. I'll just, I'll find out where we're at with that and cross-reference the letters with the DPW.
Thank you. And I would like to thank Madam Chair for a moment of silence for Laine Manugianis Pendle. She was a school committee member from 1973 to 1979, and also a town meeting member from 1987 to 1991. So my, and I'm sure the whole board's condolences go out to the family, as well as Bob Sacco's family who recently passed. He was a U.S. Army Korean War veteran. He was a teacher for over 40 years. He taught in Saugus. And he was also a cartoonist for the Saugus Advertisers. So again, we wish their families condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Debra. The only thing I would like to bring up is during the storms, is both Selectman Allen, Selectman Debra have brought up, and I'm sure we all agree, that the work done by the town employees has just been, I'm sure it's been very taxing, and they've done a really yeoman's job. But I also want to bring up the fact that consistently, emergency management puts out some great tips as to handling the storms that we have or any of the conditions. And I do want them to be recognized as well. The robo-calls, Mr. Manager?
I can say on those, we, you can't imagine the people that come into the office and call to say that they absolutely love the robo-calls and that the town is keeping them informed. And once in a while, you hear people that complain, you say, well, you have a choice to opt out of it. But when I tell you, we get numerous calls and people that come in off the street that have never visited Town Hall for those purposes, they come in and they praise the robo-calls.
Okay. I thought that the one on the, on the storm was very, very good. I do want to see a little bit more detail given to the citizens as to should their power go out? These are what we have, these are the plans we have in place. Should people ever need to be evacuated? You did a great job at saying, you check on the elderly, make certain that we do keep everything clear as far as fire hydrants. But I just want to take that, that one step further, that there are options available for people to take advantage of. Now, if I could ask you to please put out there the information where people who may not want to receive these phone calls are able to opt out. I think that they would only want to opt out on the non-emergency notifications, if you will. Because I have received a couple of requests, do I have to get them all?
So my understanding of how to opt out of those would be that you go on the town website or the police department's website, and you would click on the right, on the homepage, on the right-hand side on the town website. Down at the bottom, there's a blackboard connect icon. So you would click that, and then you would log in there and opt out. And then I think there might be also a phone number, but we can get further information on it. But that's, I think you can click and opt out of, and so that you would not receive calls or filter the calls that you receive.
But there are options as to what they're opting out of, correct? I know when we, the police chief did state that he thought there was, because I think people need to be very, very careful opting out, because there are notifications that we all need to be aware of. So there is not, he was not correct?
I'd have to look into it.
It's either all or nothing, is that what you're saying?
I don't know. So let me, let me...
Could you check it out? And if you could, just even put out on Channel 8 what people's instructions would be. Because I don't want to see anybody think that they're just opting out of, say, public announcements that don't have the same level of importance perhaps as a storm and evacuation.
I know the system, I know the system has two different types of calls that you can put out. I just don't, I'll have to look and to see if you can opt out, because they do have emergency, they have survey. There's a couple of different things that they do, I think, like a call that they would send out as a public announcement, and then there's emergency. So maybe it would make sense that you would be able to, I'm just not familiar with it.
Just for those who are considering opting out, just if what he is saying is true, then just be very, very careful, because you do want to receive the emergency notifications.
Madam Chair, just a quick one.
Selectman Allen?
You can also choose to have it come as a text message. So if you don't want your phone ringing, and you have a, you have text messaging on your personal phone, you can have it just come as a text message.
Well, perhaps we can get that information out regarding that, because like I said, most people probably do appreciate them, but there are folks that may have different work schedules or whatnot that have asked their options. Okay. Thank you. Is there anything further people want to bring up, Mr. Manager? Okay, so we're all set? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
What about citizens' comment, Madam Chair?
Oh, I do apologize, citizens' comment. Oh my goodness, I almost left two folks out of the mix, and you've been sitting there so patiently. Thank you so much. Put on my distance glasses. Just give your name and address, sir. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Jason Flynn, 75 Essex Street. I'd like to talk to you guys a little bit, a little bit. I'm an emergency management volunteer. I've been a volunteer for 13 years. I would like to start off with the good that we have done in the town. The DNC, Democratic National Convention, we were mobilized for that. We had about 20 members on call down at our old station next door. We were, I believe, called up twice. We sat that out, did that whole thing. 2006 Mother's Day Storm. We all have full-time jobs, me, my ex-deputy director, Fritz White, Jeannie Bartolo, there's too many to name. We spent two weeks out in the freezing cold, the flooded waters, seeing a lot of our townspeople's houses, basements flooded over by po'karees. I was actually one of the ones doing evacuations out of the people's homes. I have seen multiple disasters. I am trained for multiple disasters. We went without pay for that two weeks, long hours, no sleep. A lot of towns in the, a lot of businesses in the town took care of us, brought us some food. Townspeople were grateful to us, brought us some stuff so that way we could dry our clothes, fresh socks, pants, clothes, anything that we could get. We also did the water emergency in the town. We sat up right here. We had a tractor-trailer come. I personally unloaded that truck, which had 52 skids of water, 48-inch pallets, about that high. We did that with the Saugus Police's help. Most recent that we have been to is the tanker explosion. At about 2:15 in the morning, the tanker flipped. At about 2:22, my phone rang. I was in bed, same with all my other volunteers. I had work at 6:00 a.m. I got up, I put on my uniform proudly, and I responded. I opened a shelter, because I am shelter-certified through the state. We opened a shelter. We had a command post staged up at Walgreens. We ran the shelter for anybody. We actually didn't have that many people, because the word didn't get across enough. But we were still there. We teamed up with the Red Cross. We did anything we could, the police, fire, FEMA, anybody that needed anything, we were right there. We went, and I personally went to one of the houses on the corner of Vine Street, I believe that's Vine Street. The lady that lost her house, or lost a lot of her house. And then I dealt with the gentleman that owned the greenery. I used to be a Home Depot associate at the Saugus store. I dealt with him. When he seen me, alls he did was come up and give me a hug and thank me. I don't mind helping. I don't mind volunteering my time. I was brought up that way, to do what I can for the town people, for anybody that needs help. That's the way I live. That's my motto. Another thing that we responded to, once again, I was in work when I got the call from my director, Director Penaccio. We got the call for the bomb threat at Best Buy. We responded with our command post, our Unit 46. We ran command out of that for the police depart, Saugus Police, Saugus Fire, Massachusetts State Police, Massachusetts Bomb Squad. Luckily, thankfully, it was a hoax. But we were there. Last winter, we had a very, very bad storm. I bet everybody remembers that. I can tell you right now, that building was manned 24 hours a day through the whole storm. I was one of them. I was there. I re-entered a call from a lady who was too elderly and too afraid to go out in the storm, to pick up her insulin needles. I went to Stop and Shop, I got her insulin needles, and I brought it to her. She tried to reward me with money. I declined. I said, ma'am, this is my job, this is what I do. Basically, what I am trying to get across is, I don't believe emergency management has been taken seriously. We have had plenty of members, and plenty of us have either drifted away due to how we feel about it, how we were treated, how we reacted, taken out of our home. I cannot say anything about it. I choose not. I follow direction. I was told by my director, we are moving out of our home of, I've been there for 13 years, and we are going into a building down at the cemetery. We had, I don't remember how long, I got a call during, when I was at work, from my director, and I said, he said, we need to get the stuff out this weekend if we can. It's best, if we can do it, to move everything out. I left work early that day, once I started a new job. I left work early, I went to my boss, explained to him I need to leave. I left early, lost pay, cleaned out that building, all the other men, all the other volunteers, myself, Fritz, Jeannie, a few other members that were not, are not currently present. We had to take a lot of stuff that we have accrued over 13 years, and then some. We had a lot of stuff in that building. Whoever has been in that building, I'm not sure. But as you can tell, we had a lot of equipment. We are one of the biggest emergency managements on the North Shore. We were, Saugus was looked up to for its emergency management. A lot of people envied our emergency management. I'm gonna reference Chelsea. They have one vehicle. That's a command post. That is it. Two volunteers. Excuse me, one volunteer, the director, and a volunteer driver. We had over nine trucks. And we had, I believe, seven trailers, eight trailers? Two of those trailers right now are sitting outside. One of them is a hazmat trailer, which is sitting up at the public safety building. The other trailer is unique. No other emergency management that I have heard of around has built one of these. It is a shelter trailer. If the town had an incident at this current moment, I could go, my team could go, and we can set up shelter for 105 people with that trailer that we built, we have taken care of, and everything else. Basically, what I'm trying to get across is I don't feel that we were treated right. And the current building that we are in, down the cemetery, it's not as suitable for emergency equipment. It's not as suitable for emergency personnel. We do not work down there on our vehicles. It is too cold, there's no restrooms. Our main vehicles that respond to incidents are in that building. Our Unit 46 command post, our Unit 48, which is our old pumper truck, which has been dispatched through Saugus Fire plenty of times, and our little Jeep, which everybody has probably seen and loved. I love that thing. 46, which is our command post, that needs current, constant heat and power for that to run. I left my job on 24th to attend the chariot lighting and the Christmas parade. That was my unit for the night. That unit would not start. uh, the Christmas parade. That was my unit for the night. That unit would not start. Due to the cold weather it has been in, it hasn't been run, because it's too cold for anybody just to be down there. It took 15 minutes for me to get that truck started. Halfway through that parade, not even halfway, the last time you've seen an emergency management vehicle in the parade was right out front. After that, I had to pull up. I had to turn off my emergency lights, my siren, and I had to bring it back down to the cemetery, because it was not mechanically sound enough for me to run. And that is due to it not being run enough, it being stored in a cold, damp place with no power. Those trucks have power outlets on them. I can show anybody, any day, just like American ambulance next door, they can see that they have power cords on their trucks. They plug them in. We have two vehicles that have that, our command posts and our big newest truck that we call Big Blue. That truck was outside, no locks on it, because it doesn't come with locks on the doors. We have thousands of dollars in equipment. How do we know our equipment is safe outside, not touched? We have defibrillators, we have medical equipment, we have all kinds of equipment. That truck was sitting outside. Just recently, it was brought up to the DPW. It is now sitting in a enclosed heated building in the DPW. The only problem is, if there's an emergency, how are we, as volunteers, gonna get into that building? Last I have heard, we have not received access, key to access to that building. So, if there's an emergency and that truck is needed, which more than likely it will be, I hope it can wait. Now, unfortunately, I say that, and I hate to say that, and it hurts me a lot, because I love the town people. A lot of people see me, plenty of the captains, lieutenants on the police and fire, they know me by name. Every time anybody is called from emergency management, I'm the one that responds. I have lost multiple hours of pay. I don't care. That doesn't matter to me. I'm not fussy about that. I can always make money. When somebody is in need, I go. I have responded to multiple incidents. Just recently, on my own personal time, I was off to eye-party to get fireballs, little hard candies, I liked them, once I left work. I was taking Route 1 northbound, and there was a lot of traffic, couldn't figure out why. So, I cut around a couple of people, and I noticed a person laying in the middle of the highway. That person laying in the middle of the highway was hit by a motor vehicle going 55 miles an hour. It hit the girl so hard, it knocked her out of her clothes. I was the first first responder on scene. I am, I consider myself a first responder. I'm trained in first responder, I'm trained in first aid, CPR, medical, I'm trained in a lot. Saugus Police, Fire weren't even notified yet. I notified dispatch, notified them of the situation, I took care of the situation, I got traffic moving again, so that way EMS, fire, police could get to the scene. Our job doesn't stop, just like police, fire, EMT, military, emergency management's the same. Our job doesn't stop when we take off our shirts, when we take off our hats. We're always emergency management. I've responded to multiple calls in my own vehicle. Just happen to roll up on them, or one of my coworkers notifying me if somebody hurt, I can thank, and I owe that credit to emergency management. I was young when I got first joined. Mr. White took care of me, showed me the ropes, showed me how to pump out basements, showed me how to do medical, how to do lighting, all of that. Um, um, we have, the town has four light towers. I don't know if you guys know or not. We have four light towers through emergency management. They were granted to us on a grant from NERAC. Those light towers are always in use, whether it be for voting, whether it be for the high school football games, practice. Whenever the, any of our equipment is out, it is manned. Doesn't matter if it's 2:00 in the morning, doesn't matter if it's 2:00 in the afternoon, that equipment is manned. So, if you see an emergency management piece of equipment, that equipment is manned. There is an emergency management volunteer close by, if not at it.
Excuse me, I do have to interrupt you. Um, we do have rules on public comments, so I'm going to ask the board if somebody would make a motion for extension if.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Continue, sir.
Thank you. Um, another thing I would like to touch on is, our vehicles are old. Our newest vehicle is a, the director's vehicle, which is the Tahoe. You guys see that riding around town? Our vehicles always need work, always need help, and always need everything done to them. Not once in my whole 13 years have I seen one of our vehicles go up to the DPW mechanic or go to another shop. What would happen is, us as volunteers, Mr. Fritz White, Mr. Steve White, always take care of our trucks. Fritz and Steve, they're one of the most knowledgeable guys. They take care of our trucks. My father, Pat Flynn, we did over the blue truck. We did that from top to bottom. Our Jeep is broke down. Mr. Fritz White and Mr. Steve White took care of that. They always take care of our trucks. So, our trucks are always taken care of by us, not by anybody else. Um, sorry, give me one moment. Um, that building, it has bird's nests, birds, it has strapping holding the side of it together. It's not fit. I feel bad, I feel horrible every time I go down there to go and look at one of our trucks when the cemetery is over there. They did the same thing to, we did the same thing to them that they did to us. Um, call-outs.
I'm sorry?
Call-outs, dispatch.
Okay.
We were notified, um, Mr. Manager said earlier that we were dispatched, and we were out, um, this past storm. I haven't got a call. When anything happens in the town, they get a hold of me. I'm one of the first. I was out working or home sleeping to go shovel my house. I was never out, um, I was never out, never talked to any residents or anything. None of our vehicles are up and running due to the weather, due to their storage conditions. They need work, we need a heated building. That's why that building was so good for us. When I was manned there, sorry, go ahead, um, when I was manned there last storm, if it wasn't for that building, emergency management wouldn't have been around, because out there, I had a nice warm place to sleep, I had a nice warm place to eat. I had a place I could pull my truck in, I could clean it off, and I could get down and help out the townspeople. Um.
Sir, excuse me, um, we do have somebody behind you that wants to speak, one of your colleagues? No, you don't? Okay. I didn't know if you had topics that you wanted to touch on and let your colleagues speak as well. I don't know what you plan to do.
Okay. Um, so yeah, our command post wasn't even up and running for the Christmas parade. That vehicle's cold right now. If you got anybody, anybody can go down, start it up. The keys are in it. Director Ponaccio has the keys to the building. Y'all can go down, try to start it up, start any of the trucks up. They won't start, none of them. The only way they will start is if somebody like me, Mr. White, and other Mr. Whites will go down. We know the tricks to get those trucks started. If any police, fire tried to get in, use our equipment, they wouldn't be able to. Um, about the fire station, the police, police and fire station, we have yet to had a meeting, have a meeting there. I recently found out about it from watching you guys on TV. Um, it just sickens me on how we were treated, how we are treated. And you guys are trying to help us out. It helps me out. I'm, I appreciate it. But as of the end of this week, I will be giving in my resignation of 13 years. I will be giving in my resignation of first responder of emergency management. I know a couple other emergency managements want me, have approached me. I have stayed loyal to this town, and to see what was going on, nothing has happened so far that can convince me to stay. I want to eventually take up a career in FEMA. But with the way we are being treated, it seems like we are only looked upon when we do something good, when we are needed. That is the only time we, it seems like we get anything. I hate to sound wrong or selfish, but we're a bunch of volunteers. Every day we work, and it's just not right. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your input.
Madam Chairman?
Select endeavor.
If I could just say to this gentleman and to emergency management that I think it's very clear how much you love what you do, and how, I just need you to know how valued you are. This has not been an easy situation for you, I think for the manager, and I'm going to ask the manager tonight to please find a workable solution for these folks. We've already lost, you will be, from what I understand, the third member to resign. It's very clear how much you do for the town, how much you love what you do, and you are valued. And I think if we can just bring the both sides together to find a workable solution, we won't lose you, or I hope we won't lose you. So, Mr. Manager, I'm going to ask that, you know, maybe we get together with the director and with the folks, and you often can come up with better solutions working together than, I mean, it's gone on now for a couple of months. I know there's some hurt feelings, and so if you could do that and, and maybe try and work this out.
Mrs. Deppa, um, I am going to interrupt you there for just a moment. Um, we do have Mr. White on the agenda for the next time too, and I think that what we can do at this point is we can just listen.
Sure.
Um, and I think on behalf of the whole board, Mrs. Deppa is absolutely right. We do appreciate, um, your coming forward and your discussion, but we cannot have much of a discussion this night. We, we can only take the information. I appreciate it. Thank you. Would you please come to the podium? Would you like to give your name and address? You came up to speak? No?
You all know me. Jeannie Bartolo, town meeting member, Precinct 6, and also Saugus Emergency Management Shelter Manager for this town. Um, I just want to, very proud of my Jason. He's very young, I think he was very eloquent. Uh, every word that he said was the truth. Uh, unlike our town manager tonight, I didn't find one word out of his mouth the truth.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Bartolo, Mrs. Bartolo, I cannot have you make.
That's fine. I understand. I know that.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Bartolo, forgive me. I can't have anybody speaking in that nature.
I understand. You're absolutely right.
Thank you so much.
And I know that, and it just came out of my mouth. Um, I just don't feel that the volunteers are a liability to this town, because, um, if you think we are, just look out the window. Who do you think climbed 40 feet to put the star on the tree? Who do you think put up every single bulb in the Rotary? Clifton deal? Well, I'm sorry, I don't see us as being a liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, Select and Cassidy?
I just want to commend you folks for standing up tonight, having the courage to speak your mind. I know it's not easy. I know the conditions you've been working under. I don't agree with them myself, and I hope we can come to a resolution where you folks will stay and may, maybe even bring you guys, some of you guys back that have already resigned. But I want to thank all of you for everything you do for the town, and hopefully it'll continue. So, again, thanks again. I appreciate you standing up tonight and saying what's on your mind.
Thank you for your patience this evening. Is there any further business that the board would like to raise?
Madam Chairman, make a motion to adjourn?
Seconded by the chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Good evening.